Sorry, we're just a few minutes late. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 28th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. All the members are present. We have just met in executive session from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation regarding 362 Middle Sixth Avenue in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, as the Chairman declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and also to approve executive session minutes, which we did not get to, in accordance with Mass. General Law. Okay? And then we had some technical difficulties that we're working through at the moment, and we are going to provide more of an update there in just a minute, but if you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And before we go any further with tonight's meeting, I just wanted to take a moment. I'm sure you have all heard by now the very sad news that Wilmington has lost a beloved member of its community just last week. Margaret Peggy Kane passed away on last Wednesday. She was an 18-year member of the Wilmington School Committee. She was the president of the Friends of the Library and an avid volunteer in both our library and our schools. Our entire community mourns her loss, and we're forever grateful for her service and contributions to our community. So on behalf of this entire board and the manager and our administrative assistant, we offer our deepest condolences to her friends and family. Her services are being held tonight and tomorrow, so she'll certainly be in our thoughts here this evening. So if you would, please join me in a moment of silence as we honor and remember our friend, Mrs. Peggy Kane. No easy way to transition onto regular business, but we will. The number two thing is transmitting of Treasury warrants, 45, 45A, 46, and 46A. Is there a motion?
There's no motion.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyra. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. We have a couple of minutes to approve, and they are from April 22nd and May 13th of this year. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the April 22nd, 2019 minutes of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
My abstain.
Excuse me. My apologies. One abstention. Four in favor, none against, and one abstention to our new colleague. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the May 13th, 2019 Board of Selectmen minutes.
Second.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Apologize my rookie mistake there as Chairman. There's a motion and a second is the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. And we are on to our 7 o'clock appointment. My apologies to guests and to the audience that we're running a few minutes late. We, I believe it was your hope that we were going to have a presentation. Just didn't work out with the technology tonight, so I believe we are providing copies, printed copies. We're going to be working on that to try to...
Working on it. We should, the way of bringing you all to help...
Okay. Our staff is diligently working on trying to get us some hard copies so everybody in the audience can follow along, and we'll certainly, when we do get the presentation, make it available to everybody online so that they'll get an opportunity to see that. So my apologies for us not being able to facilitate that here this evening. But we do have Lynn Jennings, EPA Section Chief, and James DiLorenzo, EPA Project Manager of the Olin Superfund Site. And here in regards to Administrator's Emphasis List and a project update, and we want to welcome you both here to give us an update. I know that this meeting has been scheduled quite a while ago, and so we're glad to have you here this evening. I know that we're looking forward to an update, and I know that perhaps my colleagues and myself, the manager, have some questions about what's going on with the project. Specifically, I would imagine we can anticipate some questions about what we can do to help our friends and neighbors on Cook Avenue. So with that, I want to welcome you and certainly open this up. And perhaps, Jeff, do you want to, by way of introduction, just remind folks how we got to this? I know this has been kind of a plan to have this on the agenda for quite a while here.
Right. So I had spoken with Jim DiLorenzo, who actually is unable to be here this evening, but it was a last-minute situation, as I understand it, and then more recently Lynn Jennings about an update on where the remediation effort stands. You'll recall within the last month and a half or so, there was an announcement made about the Superfund Site here in Wilmington receiving a particular categorization, and I thought it would be important to ask that Representatives from EPA come out, be able to speak with the Board particularly about the status of the remediation efforts and the plans to ultimately arrive at a record of decision, and then also talk a bit about the meaning and the implications for this particular status that the Olin Superfund Site has been granted. So Lynn, if you could perhaps begin with that and also introduce your partner.
So first of all, I'm Lynn Jennings. I'm the Section Chief of the Massachusetts Superfund Section in Boston, Mass. So I'm responsible for all sites in Mass. that are on the National Priorities List and the cleanup and oversight of that. I have a section of about 13 engineers and scientists that oversee about 35 different sites in Massachusetts. Jim DiLorenzo, who's a project manager that I think you've probably met before, has actually been on sick leave, so he could not make it tonight, but I'm sure he'll be back to, you know, give future presentations. With me tonight is Kevin Petulis. Kevin is one of the site attorneys that works on the case with us, and I brought him along in case there's any questions that, you know, of a legal nature, liability nature, that come up. I know some of them have to do with redevelopment. The agenda that I put together for the presentation, actually, we do have a paper copy. It's just a slightly older version of the presentation. I'll send an updated version, but at least you'll have something to walk away with tonight. And like I said, we'll email an updated version. But I'll just give a little bit of background on the site. I'm assuming most people know about the site and somewhat of its history. I am going to focus on some of the questions that Jeff asked me to focus on, so I'll talk about the status of the investigation and feasibility study, our next steps in the process and our timeline relative to that. I will talk about EPA's Administrator's Emphasis List and why we selected this site and what it means for the site. I'm going to talk a little bit about the role of the responsible party in the investigation and in future cleanup at the site. And then lastly, I'll just give you an update on what we know about redevelopment of the site and the redevelopment, one developer that's, you know, been meeting with us more recently on proposals and what that means with respect to the investigation and cleanup. And then I'll open it up for questions. So, little bit of background, as many of you know, the site was listed on a National Priorities List in 2006. Part of that, there was several years of investigation and work done under the state program. The state was not really satisfied with the work that was being done by Olin and asked that the site be placed on the National Priorities List so that EPA could oversee the work. We did, after it was listed, enter into an agreement with Olin Corporation, one of the responsible parties. There are actually three parties to that agreement. Olin is the lead party doing the investigative work, and they've been working on this since 2007. At the time, they divided the site into three areas for study. We call those things operable units. And operable unit one, or Area One, is the property itself, the parcel that Olin owns. Operable unit two are surface water and sediment, areas that are on the site itself and adjacent to the site. And then operable unit three is groundwater, all issues related to groundwater. So in terms of the status of the investigation and feasibility study, I indicated earlier that Olin has been doing work for several years now. In 2015, a lot of the investigative work that they had done culminated in a report to EPA for operable units one and operable units two. So that was the property and surface water and sediment adjacent to the property. At that time, Olin actually wanted to move forward with a cleanup decision for that, for those two operable units. EPA, at the time, did not want them to proceed. We wanted them to finish or get substantial work done on the groundwater investigation so that we could come out with a more comprehensive remedy for the site. So since 2015, we've been working with EPA, I mean with Olin, trying to get them to, you know, complete the investigations and the feasibility studies and, you know, look at the groundwater in particular and the sources of contamination, the major sources of contamination, the dense aqueous phase liquid that we know is beneath the site and off the property. We have had multiple disagreements, both informal and formal, with Olin over a variety of issues, over describing the nature and extent of contamination, how to address the dapple contamination, whether we should take early action or wait and take, make a major decision on the site as a whole. So we've been going back and forth on a variety of documents and a variety of discussions and meetings and disputes for now about three years. In March of last year, Olin finally submitted what they considered a complete draft of the RI and the feasibility study. EPA had substantial comments on that. There's a letter that's been released to the public dated about September 25th. It's probably a 300-page comment letter to Olin identifying all the deficiencies in the documents that they submitted. In December, we met with them and reached agreement on a plan for them to correct the deficiencies in those documents. So we are in that process right now, and the agreement we reached with them allowed them to submit three documents to us. They submitted the first document in draft form in April of this year. It's called the interim action feasibility study, and it is focused on the dapple contamination and the groundwater contamination. That document is currently under review by EPA. On Friday, they submitted the second document, which was a feasibility study for the property itself and surface water and sediment. Again, that document will also be reviewed by EPA. And on June 28th, they will submit the final document, which is the draft remedial investigation for all the studies they've done thus far. That's coming on June 28th. Our plan, our next steps in the timeline, is to basically complete the review of those documents, and we expect that will happen in the July-August timeframe. It's likely that EPA will have to supplement these documents with additional information and additional alternatives for dealing with the contamination at the site. So if you guys have a hard copy, I'm on Slide 6, next steps in timeline. So yeah, July is, we'll get the last document the end of June. We plan to spend roughly July and August reviewing those documents, revising them as necessary. We are doing our own independent evaluation of alternatives. I could tell you from the first document that I think some of you may have seen, because we released the draft document to the public, the range of alternatives that Olin has put in that document for addressing dapple and groundwater are not all-inclusive. There are missing alternatives that we specifically ask them to develop and evaluate, and they're missing from the document, so we will likely develop our own set of alternatives in concert with theirs. And around September of October, or October of this year, we're planning to issue our proposed plan for cleanup. This is long in coming. We've been trying to get to this stage for about two to three years with Olin. The plan, it's a proposed plan, meaning it's, we put it out for comment, it's not final until we go through the whole process. This plan will actually attempt to come up with a final plan for the actual property and surface water and sediment, and an interim cleanup plan for D N apple, I'm sorry, dapple and any highly contaminated groundwater. It will not include the final cleanup plan for groundwater. There's still investigation work that needs to be done to come up with a final plan, and we'll be working with Olin simultaneously to finish that investigative work. But we do feel, and we felt for a while, there's enough information to start the cleanup on the dapple and on the highly contaminated areas of groundwater. So when we issue that public comment, that proposed plan, we typically conduct at least a 30-day public comment period, and we'll accept comments from anybody and everybody, including Olin. The state will be commenting on the document, and anybody from the public, any of the community groups are welcome to comment on EPA's proposed plan. And usually, if there's additional time needed and people make a request, we can extend that. You know, usually it's another 30 days that we will extend the comment period for. In December, so next slide, 7, in December, after considering the comments that we received, our plan is to issue a record of decision for the cleanup. And again, it'll be a final cleanup plan for some of the actions at the site, but only an interim cleanup plan for other actions. Later on, after we finish more data collection, eventually we will issue a final cleanup plan for groundwater at the site. After we issue this cleanup plan, we will once again negotiate with the responsible parties to conduct the cleanup. That is standard protocol under the statute, is to start by asking the responsible parties if they want to conduct the work and try to negotiate an agreement by which that is done. If they don't agree to do it, we have other enforcement tools. Sometimes we issue orders and require them to clean it up. Sometimes, we, you know, we take the lead in doing the cleanup and seek, you know, cost recovery later. Each case is very, very different in how we, you know, proceed with getting the work As I mentioned earlier, we will continue to study the groundwater to decide what the long-term cleanup plan is in terms of the ability to restore that groundwater to its productive use. And at some point in the future, we'll issue a final cleanup plan for the site, which is primarily related to groundwater cleanup. So let me talk about the EPA's Administrator's Emphasis List. This list actually, this directive came out of a new task force under the new federal administration. They did, it was a study of superfund and what works in superfund and what doesn't work. And out of it, they decided that certain sites needed, you know, sometimes needed focused attention at very high levels within the organization to make them successful. And about a year ago, they actually listed, released a list of several sites, I'd say about a dozen or so across the country. Olin was not on that original list. They're continuing, it's an ongoing list, and they've had some success stories out of that, out of that list, where some sites have actually come off the list now because the emphasis that was put forward and the support the site got, and it's varied, resulted in, you know, productive forward movement in the site or some success story in the site. They're really for sites that might benefit from having focused involvement at all levels of EPA to achieve a specific milestone. You know, for the case of Olin, we've been, you know, it's been, we've had a difficult time getting to this point of issuing a record of decision for a lot of different reasons. You know, working with Olin has not been, it's been difficult. The cooperation has not been where we want it to be. And so we propose that the site, we, the region, proposed that the site be put on the list so that we could be briefing up the chain of EPA as we get closer to our decision-making. If we run into additional issues with Olin, you know, we'll have support at our higher levels to move forward. That may mean us, you know, taking over the work or taking over portions of the work. It may mean we take a more aggressive enforcement approach with Olin. It may mean that, you know, senior levels of Olin meet with senior levels of EPA and decide it's in everybody's best interest to move through this, you know, process in a more cooperative manner. So we believe that having the emphasis on the site is kind of like a spotlight. We have to brief out to the administrator very frequently, and this is exactly the kind of site they'd like to have on the list because, I mean, particularly sites that have been in the investigative mode for too long. 12 years is a very, very long time for a site to be in the investigative mode on the National Priorities List and not have a cleanup decision. That's just, you know, a timeframe that's not acceptable, and we need to move past that. So that is the, you know, one of the reasons why. You know, the other reason, too, is that the site has redevelopment potential. There is interest in redeveloping the site, and, you know, I believe that redevelopment has been stalled somewhat by the lack of progress on the cleanup. There's lack of clarity on what needs to be done related to the cleanup, and that impedes redevelopment of the site. So that's another good reason to have it on the emphasis list. They, you know, the administration really likes to promote redevelopment, not that we decide what redevelopment is good or bad for a community, that's up to the community. But once it's decided and development is moving forward, you know, we work very well with developers and property owners to get the cleanup done correctly and in a way that doesn't interfere with the cleanup that's underway. So as I said, I'm on Slide 9, why Olin. There is really two main issues. The RIFS was ongoing too long, and there was redevelopment that was stalled because of cleanup issues. And then the benefit is support from, for our headquarters office in the event we need to take, you know, more aggressive actions. And again, sometimes it spurs corporate support to do the right thing. I do suspect when we come up with our proposed plan, Olin will go right to the administrator and likely, I don't know that they'll support it. And so if we have our, all the agents, you know, levels of agency briefed, it makes it easier to kind of get these through the process. So the role of the PRP in the investigations and cleanup. Our superfund law, this is Slide 10, has broad and strong enforcement authorities for compelling responsible parties to conduct the work. Responsible parties at Olin, I have the list here, they're mostly former owners and operators. I think there's six of them in total. Three of them signed on to do the investigation. Olin was the lead party conducting the investigation, but there are two other strong PRPs that are also signed on to that. After the rod, we will actually engage all six of them again, you know, for the conduct of the cleanup. And, you know, again, sometimes certain PRPs have a different corporate, corporate ethic when it comes to doing this stuff, and, you know, it oftentimes helps to have others at the table to move these things along. So the redevelopment at the site, it's been, you know, proposals on the table for a while, and I believe Olin has signed a PNS agreement, you know, for the sale of the property. More recently, or most recently, in October, GFI approached EPA regarding a plan that they had to redevelop the site into an intermodal transportation facility dealing with consumable commodities. It was slightly different than the previous proposal on the table. They were planning to use the rail line but not for transporting hazardous materials, and they weren't planning to get a special license for the operation of that rail line. So their proposal is different than the one that's been on the table for a lot longer. And so they explained that to us, how their proposal was different. We've had several calls and meetings since October through March, and more recently, a meeting actually with GFI, Olin, and EPA at the table. GFI was interested in knowing several things. First of all, they wanted to present what their proposed proposal was for redevelopment, how they were going to lay out their facility, and they were asking EPA whether that would work with the cleanup. They were asking what the EPA schedule was for completing the investigation and cleanup and how that might fit with their timing for redevelopment. They were very hopeful we were going to get to a cleanup decision quicker, and I'll explain why. They were trying to decide if they should proceed without an EPA cleanup plan in place and what it would mean for them with respect to how they do their redevelopment and liability. And again, they, they were discussing with us their liability if they proceeded ahead of time. So what our position is on all of that and what we told them is that basically generally EPA supports redevelopment at superfund sites and PL sites if it doesn't result in a risk, or it doesn't exasperate the problem, or it doesn't interfere with our cleanup plan going forward. It's best done after we've selected our cleanup plan. We have worked before with developers on sites prior to getting the cleanup plan in place, but it really depends on the project and how big a project it is. Sometimes it's easy when somebody wants to redevelop a small portion of a site that we know is already clean, and we can work with them on how to do that so that they don't interfere with the broader cleanup. At Olin, it's a bit more complicated than that. Ultimately, it's so, by statute, they cannot interfere with our remedy out there, and we don't know exactly what the remedy is completely yet. It's hard for them to move forward without possibly interfering. And we made it clear to them that if they did proceed, they bear the risk if we have to do something in a spot where they've put something that's in the way of what we need to do. We did encourage them to try to work with Olin and try to get Olin to cooperate, to, you know, expedite the document development, you know, allowing us to come up with a cleanup plan so that we could talk, you know, tangibly about what we thought was going to happen and where it was going to happen. They really, I don't think, have had a lot of success in moving it quicker by talking to Olin. So, you know, it's difficult, you know, in some of these meetings, I'll tell you, they did, you know, put their layout on the, on the table and showed where they wanted to put the building and how they wanted to do it in phases. We know we still have to do some groundwater investigation right on that property. So some of the complexities are, if we need monitoring wells and they put a building up, you know, can we still get access to certain areas to put wells in? And they try to address those, those questions by saying, well, can we put in wells before we build the building? Can we put in vaults before we build the building? Our building will have high ceilings, you know, we should be able to get a drill rig in there to drill wells. So that's, you know, a partial way of responding to the issue if they do it with EPA approval. Some of the other, you know, issues that we talked about is soil management on the property, groundwater management if they encounter it while they're building, constructing the building. In the end, if we select, you know, a pump and treat or some type extraction technology for extracting D N apple or dapple off the property or even on some of the other adjacent parcels, we would need to know where that, that system's going to be sited. And so we turned to Olin and asked them, where would you site such a system if this property was redeveloped as it, as, as it's proposed? And there weren't a lot, there weren't a lot of good answers to those types of questions. So it's not that it can't be done. It, it needs to be done with open and cooperative communication between Olin, EPA, and the developer, and otherwise the developer takes the risk that if they put something in the way of where we need to be, we may have to have them, you know, take that down or help us install a well in an area that their building may be in the way of. The other point that we made clear to the developer is that, you know, the redevelopment still has to go through the appropriate local permit and approval process, that EPA's not going to trump that. So they have to get whatever appropriate permits they would need to get and understand, for example, part of the building they proposed was in an area that was a wetland. Currently, that area isn't something that we believe is subject to cleanup, so it wouldn't be exempt from any permits from EPA's perspective. So they'd need to go through, you know, the town to get the appropriate, you know, permits for dealing, working in that area that's, you know, outside of EPA's purview. So those are a lot of the discussions that we had with GFI, and we did try to have a meeting with Olin, the three of us together, to see if there was, you know, a willingness to cooperate as a team to help move this forward, and it really don't think was productive. I don't think GFI was satisfied with the outcome of that meeting, but I may be wrong. Actually, so the next slide, redevelopment of the site. Some of these are some technical issues that we talked about with GFI, some of these I just mentioned. Oh, so the containment area, this is one area on the site where a lot of the waste was disposed of that Olin, when they were working at this site under the state program, they put a slurry wall around it and they put a temporary cap over it. And GFI was asking about whether they could build something on top of that area, and they were going to phase it. They were going to build part of the building, part of the site, and then Phase Two of the, of the building. the, of the building on top of that. And they asked us if it, if they could do that. And our answer to that is yes, as long as it's engineered correctly. Of course, they'd have to come to us with, with plans on how they would engineer that building to not interfere with the function of that cap and that they could maintain that cap in the future even with the building present. We've done this before at other sites and we have a site in Connecticut, Stratford, Connecticut, where there's a Home Depot built right on top of, um, a landfill area from waste from the Rayvestis site. So this is something we've done before and it, and it can be done. It just needs to be done with the proper plans and approvals. Another issue we talked about is we know that there's some cleanup that has to be done and the streams and wetlands right adjacent to the Olin property. And again, we were asking how that work would be staged if the building was, there's not a lot of, the plan that we saw, the building took up a good chunk of the property. So there's not a lot of other land left to stage cleanup work. And again, this is not something, there's a way that can be phased. You could get that work done sooner in order to allow redevelopment to happen, but those are the kind of discussions that we would have to be involved in and approve, uh, in order to let this go forward. Um, I talked about more groundwater investigation work, uh, and I talked about the need for possible treatment system on the property and where that would, where that would be So that's, that's the gist of the presentation I put together. Open it up now for any questions folks may have.
Sure, thank you. And if I could just, uh, the gentleman, I believe it's Mr. Petruilis, my senator.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us. Could you just remind anybody who might just be tuning in, your position?
Yeah, so I am an attorney in the Office of Regional Counsel in Region One, and I'm one of the site attorneys on the Olin site.
Great. Well, thank you for being here. And we're sorry to hear that Mr. DiLorenzo is not feeling well. But I know my colleagues probably have some questions, so if you don't mind, we'll open it up for questions. Is there anybody who'd like to? Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. McCoy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of comments and a couple of questions, but first let me say that I think Jim DiLorenzo is a stand-up guy. I wish him well. And I would always say to Jim, I've been on the board for 30 years, so I've been here since day one. I'd always say to Jim, I go, Jim, we're counting on you. Your big brother, the federal government, some people may not have faith, but I've got faith in the federal government that they're going to help the residents here in this town and it's important. And now that Jim's not here for this meeting, but I'm sure we'll see him because he's a strong, wonderful guy, I'm going to say to you, your big brother and your big sister, you've got to help us here in the town. You've got to really work with us. We're counting on you. And like I said, I've been on the board 30 years, I've been here since day one. So, uh, thank you for being here tonight. My biggest concern is that this is something that's not new. I've served on the Board of Selectmen. When we voted to take the recommendation from the DEQE, which was the Department Environmental Quality Engineers, and now it's known as DEP, Department of, uh, the DEP, Department Environmental Protection, uh, to transfer jurisdiction to the EPA because it is now and has been a Superfund site for many years. Because the EPA has larger resources when helping towns like ours. So we're counting on you to really work with us. The most important thing I can say to you tonight in simple terms is that the, is, is that the interim remediation should not replace the big remediation plan. You know, there should be no development on the Olin site, not until a full plan, which would include some type of cleanup first from EPA and the community gets to weigh in on it. And also it should include the Wilmington Board of Selectmen's input. You know, and I just, I remember years ago, uh, what is it, Jeff? We lost five out of the seven wells. Was it five out of?
Five out of nine.
Five out of nine wells. You know, that used to be one of our greatest natural resources. At one time, we used to sell water to another community because of the contamination and what has happened at Olin and businesses prior to Olin has contaminated that. And they've even gone on record that you would have some type of whistleblowers. And they actually said that they dug up, and there's a record of it, they dug up the cement on the floor and they put barrels in it and they filled over it. You know, that's a record. They've said that. You know, it's whistleblowers. So there's contamination out there that we're probably not even aware of, but it's an ongoing thing. You know, and I've got a question and I would like to ask, what role does the town-elected officials have when planning for any kind of redevelopment on this Superfund site of Olin? If I could ask that question and maybe get an answer, then I got a follow-up question if I could through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So you have the same, I guess, authority as you would at any, at any site. In other words, you have local authorities to, to support or, or, or stop development. Whatever the laws are within your community to support or stop development, I think that's the framework you're working under. You know, EPA's authority is basically not to interfere with development unless it interferes with our cleanup. And so that's why, you know, again, we, we work, you know, very, very closely in as many situations, it's, it's difficult if the development is not something the town supports. Because we really don't have a way to stop that, uh, as to be at the, at the local level. Uh, it works very well when it's development that, that the town does support. Uh, you know, we generally can work, like I said earlier, with a developer, an engineer around our cleanup and have a lot of successful outcomes. But, you know, your authorities here at the site are no different than your authorities at any other site in town, you know, whatever your local authorities are to stop it, whether it's zonings or permits or whatever, those are the, you, you still have those same authorities.
All right. And the second question, if you could, I really appreciate your thought on this. Who initiated the interim, uh, remediation process? Was it GFI, Olin, EPA, or who?
It was EPA. Um, and there's a reason, you know, for that. Uh, part of the reason is that to get to a final, there's still a fair amount of investigative work that needs to be done. And, and that's unfortunate. It's, it's unfortunate that we're, even though we've been studying the site for, you know, 12 years, it's a complicated site. It's probably one of the most complicated sites we've got in our region. You know, the issues associated with groundwater are difficult because they're not only just in the shallow aquifer, they're, they're, they're down in bedrock. And that, once it gets to that point, it's complicated to understand it. So we could continue on this path of, of waiting till we get all the data and no work would get done. There is significant benefit now towards starting to extract what we know is a problem. And that's the DAPL material. The sooner we get that out of there, the better off we are in the long term. The longer it sits there, the longer, you know, it can migrate and, and, and continue to cause problems, especially if there's other development going on, other wells going in and maybe not drinking water wells, but any other developer could come in within that neighborhood and put in a, a production well for cooling water, for example, process water. And that's going to affect the hydrogeology of the site. So our goal is to start getting some cleanup. And the sites where we've actually get out there and early and, and, and get some actual cleanup work done, i- i- in the long term, it shows remarkable benefits. And, and so it was EPA that was the proponent of getting an interim action in place to address the DAPL and to address this highly contaminated groundwater that we know exists.
Right now, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I assume the plume was spread so far at one time. You're talking back in 2006, 2007. Now in 2019, we're going to be approaching 2020. As, that plume, I would assume, and from what I understand, is spreading even more in that area. Could you just talk upon that, please?
Yeah. And that's actually interesting. One of the technical issues we've been debating with, uh, Olin Corporation for three years. They will portray it, and if you read their technical documents, that things are stable, that they're unchanged. Um, you know, we've done a deep dive on the data ourselves, deeper than we normally have to do. Normally, you know, we don't have to have consultants looking at every data point and graphing it, but we've done that. And, you know, we, our conclusions on the extent of contamination is that it is expanding. It is migrating further. And we believe it is possibly is in areas that we haven't actually got to yet because of it being in bedrock.
You said there are times when, had people have drinking well water, there's not an issue, but this has affected Cook Ave with their well water. And that's sad. I mean, I'd like to talk about that at another time, but let's touch upon it now. You know, what about those folks in that area? We really need to do something for those folks. So this thing's spreading further than what Olin is trying to claim. They're trying to say, no, everything's great. It's been about 20 years now. We can do what we can to do. And once again, we're counting on you, you know, to really, really look at that, you know?
Yeah. So with respect to Cook Ave, our plan actually is, you know, is, is to give our cleanup plan to address that issue as part of this decision that's coming out in the fall. So we're, we do have some new information. We have new toxicity information about NDMA that we're evaluating. And, um, we're looking at, you know, the technical options for, um, you know, providing bottled water or providing water. What's the most, um, useful, most economical thing, practical thing to do over the long term? Clearly not providing bottled water. That's not a practical solution to the problem. So we're about, you know, we're going to look, take another look at it. We did have Olin do a feasibility study a while ago and I think Jim and other folks at the agency held off on issuing a final decision because we expected we were going to be able to issue a more comprehensive decision on groundwater sooner. And when that, you know, that hasn't happened, we now realize that's, that's going to be part of our plan in the fall.
I'm really glad to hear this because this basically plays into what I want to talk about, those folks in Cook Ave, you saying that there is an issue. And what kind of price do you put on it? You know, evidently they're getting bottled water trucked from, uh, Olin. But the bottom line is I would love to see the town run the water line up there, give those folks the water. We pay for it, we put an attachment on the property of Olin or we make them pay for it. Plain and simple. It's because of Olin, those folks' quality life is down the toilet. I hate to say it that way. I mean, they say you can drink the water, the bottled water they bring in. It's okay to take a bath and it's okay to cook in it. What do you do when you have an infant? You're going to wash that infant in, in the water? Some folks might have no choice. What's the price of that life? What's the price? I'm not trying to be dramatic here, but it's happened. And that's why development should not go on that site. Basically, for Olin to say, yep, everything's okay, this, but I'm glad to hear that, that it has spread. You know, I know I took up some time, Mr. Chairman, but I've been involved in this since day one and I've gotten that more of the utmost respect for Jim DiLorenzo. I think he's a stand-up guy, classy guy, and I'd say to him again, if he was sitting here, Jim, we're counting on you. You're a big brother, federal government, and I'm hoping that you folks look beyond that. And there's no way that we should have any type of development until there is some remediation done for us. That's all I need to say. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Is there anyone else? Awesome question. Mr. Reed.
I want to thank both you, Mr. Jennings and Mr. Petruilis, for being here and for taking the time to kind of get everybody caught up to speed. For those who haven't, uh, followed the history, it, I found it to be almost relieving that you've found that your experience with Olin to be frustrating. And it really shouldn't be that way, but at least it feels like, uh, your experience with them has been similar to ours. The, uh, the issue of the, just the passage of time increasing the size of the plume and the contamination migrating, uh, if you have a potentially responsible party that's, uh, not cooperative, uh, it seems like they're really just making the problem worse. And the ones that have to actually pay the price for that are the residents that are in the neighborhood, uh, which really just kind of adds insult to injury, I think. But it, um, I'll echo my colleague's comment. We're very much counting on, on the EPA. We, we don't have as a municipality, the resources or, or the legal teeth really to force, um, Olin to do and the other potentially responsive, uh, parties to, to remediate the site and do everything that they can to, I guess, undo the harm that has been done and continues to just get worse, uh, simply by the passage of time and migration of, of I will agree that the 12 years to be in investigative mode is, certainly seems too long and that's not having anything to compare it to. But a lot of folks have been waiting, uh, for a very long time for, for something to happen and I will compliment and thank you for, uh, the EPA's initiative in putting it on the priorities list. I did have a question on that. And I, I understand a press release isn't exactly, um, an action plan, but I, uh, I think it'll flush out kind of the, the bigger role of where we are in, in the grand scheme of things. The, the press release that was, um, put out in early May, uh, April, uh, said the Olin Chemical Superfund Site was added to the Administrator's Emphasis List with the goal of expediting the selection of a remedy to remediate soil, surface water and areas of highest groundwater contamination at that time. The, the qualifier highest groundwater contamination to me seemed like a giant red flag because, well, where's the line between highest and not highest? And does that just mean you're going to do the one worst part and then the rest of it, nothing? But, uh, the, the picture that I think that you're painting, at least for me, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, is that, uh, this is a, a plan before the final plan.
Correct.
So you're, you've identified the, uh, the worst parts and you want to get a plan in place so the cleanup can start while you work on the final plan. So this is more of a, let's get started because enough of the investigation mode while Olin and the other potentially responsive parties kind of drag their feet and aren't as cooperative as, as the EPA and certainly the residents of town would like to be, but let's get to work and start trying to, um, make things better before, uh, rather than just let the problem continue to get worse.
Great. Yeah, so I, I will emphasize this is an interim, this is why we're calling it an interim plan and not a final plan. You know, the final plan will rarely go to the question of restoring the aquifer back to its complete, you know, drinking water capability. And, and that's a complex question. And we're not ready to, to, to say what's the best way to do it or if in fact it can be done. All right? We're not ready to say that yet. We are ready to say, we know there's a lot of mass of contamination in that aquifer right now. And obviously in those DAPL pools, you know, that, that you've seen, I'm sure figures and diagrams showing them, uh, that, that stuff clearly has very high levels of NDMA in it. And it makes, you know, that's a source. And our statute and all our policies and regulations say, you know, if it's a source, you know, you've got to address it. You have to either remove it or you've got to treat it. You've got to get it out of there. You have to have source control on a site. Uh, so in addition to the DAPL, and this is, it's a very good question, we haven't finished deciding where we're going to draw the line, is we also have this other groundwater that's above the DAPL stuff and slightly down gradient. That's, it's, you know, we, we can, we'll plot it. And when we come back and give a public demonstration, we'll show you the plots of, you know, up to this point, the concentrations are 5,000 pots per billion or 11,000 pots per billion, et cetera. And we'll show you how, you know, the extent. And the goal is to also try to get at this high concentrated groundwater because it also has a fair amount of mass of contamination in it. And there's this kind of trade-off, bang for the buck. It, it, it may not be the final decision even on where we're going to seep this mass, but getting started on some of it now, both in the DAPL and the groundwater, uh, we believe is important for the overall success of the site, whether it's just to contain it so it doesn't get any worse or whether it's to even give us the chance to restore it, um, you know, to productive use. So, you know, that's why we're trying to tackle, I think, Olin, you know, you know, they've, for years, they've defined this DAPL stuff in an effort to maybe limit what they ever have to deal with at this site and just limit it to DAPL material. But it's, it's not consistent with agency policy and, uh, and that's why, you know, there's a lot of agency precedent and policy to get out early and deal with stuff that we know contains high masses of contamination. And again, it's, it's in both the DAPL and, and groundwater that's not DAPL. The only difference between those two materials is its physical property. You know, one is it's dense and it sinks and kind of sitting in these, you know, bowl form formations in the ground. The groundwater is not dense, doesn't sink, it, it flows, you know, it flows differently. Both of these things are, are equally problematic for causing further contamination of the aquifer.
So I, um, just reading from the, uh, Olin's draft plan from last month, uh, and this is using their numbers, which, you know, are their best case scenario. On the Main Street DAPL's pool, 13 million gallons of DAPL. The off, um, our property Westitch Pool is a million that they've estimated and the on property DAPL pool is 200,000 gallons of, of this dense aquiferous liquid. It's just, um, I mean, there's really no way to spin it even, even using their figures. There's, this is a significant problem. It's going to take an awful long time to clean up. But I, um, I'll, I'll echo my colleague again, I, we're really counting on you to, to, uh, to continue to be diligent, continue the good work because, uh, there's an awful lot of people that have been affected by this in several, several ways. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two questions. So the, the first is you said that there have been phone calls or meetings with the EPA, Olin and the potential developer. What if anything does the EPA give for guidance as to the? What, if anything, does the EPA give for guidance as to the, the feasibility of a development on that site? So let's say, for example, it might not be GFI, but let's say, you know, a developer comes onto the site and they need to dig real deep foundations, or they need to put in cooling wells, like you had given as an example. Does the EPA kind of give a feasibility opinion on that, and, and what additional remedial work would be needed for that to be possible?
Yeah, it, it depends. We, you know, again, even with GFI, they gave us their conceptual, this is where we wanna put the building, you know, in these areas of the site. That's not enough for us to fully say, oh, that's great, go for it. We usually get, you know, more detailed plans and specs. We get, you know, I think, their excavation plans, their soil management plans, and we would do that with any proposal that happened on-site. And the other thing, too, is I think, as one of the gentlemen over there said, you know, we sample the site, and the way we sample it, we sample it in a grid. It's very possible, you know, that, that, you know, we didn't hit every spot, so it's possible there's residual contamination there. So we would require a developer to have plans in the event they found it. So, as to how they're gonna manage that waste and what they're gonna do with it, and they'd have to have approval from us as to how they're gonna do it. But if somebody were to come along and, and say, hey, I wanna do, you know, a cement processing facility, for example, or something to that effect, and I want a well, I'm gonna install a well right here, and I wanna extract, you know, 100 million gallons or whatever to, to, as a coolant, you know, they'd have to present that to us and get our approval. You know, something like that, where you're extracting groundwater in a situation where we know we get contaminated groundwater, we'd be saying, all right, what are you gonna do with this water? We know it's contaminated, are you gonna treat it before you use it? And how is that gonna affect, if we have a treatment system already in place, how will it affect that? We would make that developer do the scientific studies to prove to us they are not interfering with our remedy, they are not exacerbating the problem. If they do, if they, you know, they give us a study and say, oh, that's good, and then they start doing it, and all of a sudden we go, uh-oh, it's going in the wrong direction, they become a responsible party. They have to do, you know, cleanup to address that.
Okay.
So, if for each of these, you know, it's, it's very site-specific on what happens and how it happens. We've done a lot of this, you know, not too far down the street here, at, at the Industrial Plex site, where they've built all kinds of stuff, and they continue to build stuff there. You know, they're adding residential development in places we didn't clear for residential use. And with each developer, we say, okay, give us your plan to sample and clean up what's there to make it protective and residential. You wanna build, you know, a target? Okay. We know that there's this, this, and this there. And then certain areas of that site, you can't, you can't build on.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but could you just clarify where that was, that we were speaking of just a moment ago?
Oh, the Industrial Plex site is right down the highway here. It's, it's where the regional, the Jimmy Anderson Transportation Center, that whole area is a big superfund site.
Just wanted to make sure if you went over that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So we've done a lot of redevelopment there, a lot of different kinds of redevelopment. And, and again, we work, you know, very closely with proposals. We had somebody come in on that site, and they wanted to put a Topgolf facility right on one of the hide piles. People drive by and they see, oh my God, it's open land right next to 93. And they come in and they say, hey, you know, we want one right there. And we say, okay, hi, you can't, how are you gonna deal with this hide pile that's underneath there? You can't, you can't take that cover off, you know, you gotta protect that. They, they, you know, if they can't do it, and they can't convince us it can be done safely without a problem with our remedy, they don't get approval from us to do it.
Okay. So it's fair to say that the EPA kind of stays attached to the site even after?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and a fair amount of resources go, especially when it's redevelopment. Still, even though that site's had a cleanup plan, and our cleanup is done on that site for the most part, every time, you know, somebody comes out and wants to change the use, if it's not consistent with what we, you know, know, you know, assumed it would be at the time of cleanup, you know, we have to get back involved. That would be the same thing if somebody came along to Olin and said, I wanna make this residential. You know, we've done a study that talks about what it can, what can happen. We assumed it was gonna be industrial commercial, because that's what it is right now. But if somebody came along and said, we want it residential, we'd say, okay, that's a whole different cleanup plan out there. You know, the soils out there aren't safe for residential use, and this is what you'd need to do to make it safe for residential use. And they have to decide if the cost of doing that, in some cases, the cost of them as a developer doing the cleanup is worth it for the amount of money they're gonna make on the redevelopment. But, yeah, well, we stay tied to the sites as long as they're on the NPL, as long as waste is left in place. And at Olin, I'm sure waste will be in place for a long time.
Okay. And then my second question, I don't know if Attorney Petroulis would have answered, or you would answer, but you had referenced that being on the emphasis list kind of gives you a broader approach with Olin. And I think you had referenced that, you know, possibly EPA takes over the remediation, and Olin would have to fund, you know, pay for it at some point. Can you just give us, and we're not holding you to this, but what are other examples of kind of the aggressive approach that could be taken? What, what are some of the remedies that the EPA has, or the, the consequences that EPA can present to Olin if they're, continue to not be cooperative once a plan is in place?
I mean, the most common one, and, you know, the most common one we've used, I think, is more an order. So if we, we come up with a cleanup plan and we go into negotiations with a responsible party to do the work, and when we do that, we actually will, we negotiate basically, not only what they're gonna do, but the timeframe on which they're gonna do it. If they don't agree to that, oftentimes, we have, you know, we have done this, we have authority to issue an order, and the order comes with even more strength than a, than a mutual agreement, as more penalties associated with it. So that's typically, especially when we have a viable responsible party, that we know is a responsible party, it's not a question about, well, maybe they are responsible, maybe they're not. You know, it's more typical to use an order approach. That's not to say, you know, we've also done cash-out settlements where, with a company, where we estimate what the cost is gonna be, and they agree to pay, you know, a certain amount of money to, which generally is what we think it's gonna cost. A good example of that is the New Bedford Harbor site, where, you know, Aerovox paid us $326 million to, to clean up that harbor. So it's hard to say how this one will go. I think, especially, you know, with the fact that there are other responsible parties, big-name responsible parties like Bill Wright and Stepan, you know, they're, they're financial viable parties. So it's hard to say what the dynamic will be. But, you know, again, typically, you know, my guess is if Olin wouldn't agree, other parties wouldn't agree, we probably look at more an order than, than anything else. You know, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, no, the only thing I would, just to make clear, is by being on the Administrator's list, it brings heightened focus, but it doesn't change any of our statutory authorities. So our enforcement tools aren't any different because it's on that list. But otherwise, what Lynn said is correct.
Mr. Jim?
Yeah? Couple of questions. Thank you. Presentation was very interesting, informative, and I agree with my colleagues, we are definitely counting on you for this project, for it to be cleaned. Mr. McCoy mentioned barrels on-site, and I saw you both writing down, I don't know if you were writing that information down on your pad and paper, but what happens to those barrels? Are they removed? Are they?
So, so, yeah, this is kind of case in, case in point. I mean, interestingly, oftentimes, we do hear anecdotal stories like that. As a matter of fact, I think we got some information similar to that from work about contamination under some of the rail spurs there, that when Olin was cleaning up the site, you know, they cleaned up to the rail spur and, and possibly left contamination under the spur. You know, we've gone in and we've sampled, you know, we've sampled under the spur, we didn't find any residual contamination. We sampled under the buildings, and we didn't find any drums or anything like that. That's not to say that if somebody were to develop that site in the future, and they ripped up those foundations, and we found those buried drums, you know, we would make, whoever the party is, whether it's the developer or Olin, go back and address it.
Okay.
So it, you know, it's, it's hard to uncover everything on a site, a site like that, when it has a sordid history. We try to do a fairly decent, you know, investigation before we come up with a plan to say, we, we believe we've covered it good enough. But, you know, we have, we have abilities to continue to make them address it if we find it. And if we find it, I mean, if there's drums, you know, they'll dig them up and dispose them as, as, you know, at a licensed facility.
There's something, I, and I may be wrong, I'm not a, excuse me for my voice, I have a little laryngitis. They talk about a containment wall or to, over there, and there may be some cracks or leaking in that containment wall, which is concerning, I'm sure, for all of us. How is that going to be addressed, fixed, or, I mean, what happens? Is that containment wall continue to have that, the contamination in it forever? And it's supposed to stay in that containment wall, but now that it's beginning to crack or leak, if it is? How do you address it? How do you fix it?
That's, it's one of the many, we spent hours discussing this with Olin, hours, just countless hours. We, we don't agree on whether it's leaking or not. EPA's opinion is that, you know, it, it likely is not 100% effective at containing waste. And the reason for that is multifold, and again, we'll get into a lot of these details when we present the results of the RI. First of all, when the wall was constructed, you know, the way it was constructed, you know, they dug down till they got to rock. They encountered a lot of fractured weathered rock, and they, they put the wall right there. To get a tight seal on something like that is virtually impossible. That's the first issue. The second issue, really doesn't matter about the wall around, we have information to suggest the bottom of the hole itself has, has a fractured bedrock system. So even if the wall is holding it tight, you think about a bowl, it's, it's got holes in the bottom that things are leaking out of. So it could be leaking in and out of below the, the wall itself. That's not to say the wall doesn't serve an important purpose. We think it does help minimize some of the flow. Our remedy, you know, we'll have to address that, and we're looking at a lot of different options to address that. Clearly, one of the options is to, is to remove the dapple material from within that area. We're also looking at removing of the soil material that's within that area as an option. And then lastly, it's, you know, it's covering that area with a better cap that minimizes infiltration into that area. It can be in a very effective way to contain whatever's remaining there over the long term. So those are all the options that we're currently, you know, considering right now. And, you know, we issued the proposed plan, we'll explain which one we're selecting and why we're selecting it. But that whole, is it leaking, not leaking, is, is one of the, one of the topics we debated with Olin at, at length, because their, their conclusions are different. And the other thing I will, you know, say also about having this emphasis list is, and just in general, we've tapped, the EPA and the team has tapped, you know, basically the experts in the country on this stuff. You know, we expect to get into intense negotiations with Olin, and we're bringing, you know, the best people we have across the country to, to work with us on this dapple material and ways to treat it, and innovative technologies that might be out there for dealing with it. It's not a common, the material itself is not common, and the contaminant N D M A is not common for, you know, commonly found at our other sites. So, you know, we've tapped upon experts from ORD to assist us on some of these, you know, more difficult issues.
And there's no way, I mean, I'm just throwing this out, that there's no way to, as you cap something, there's no way to cap the bottom of it to prevent those cracks from happening, like you would seal, like you would seal a driveway?
Right, right. It's not, it's not typical that we do that. It's much like a landfill. We have a lot of landfills, you know, that at the time, you know, we first started putting stuff into the landfill, we didn't, you know, we didn't line it accordingly. And then, you know, years later, we realize, oh, you know, it's, it's, everything's leaking out. And, you know, a cap scenario is, is a very effective way at, at keeping things contained. Again, it's probably not gonna be the sole solution here at the site. Obviously, you know, we will be dealing, we have areas off-property, that we've got a dapple pool, you know, right next door, Jewel Drive, underneath the Jewel Drive area, and another one out by Main Street. You know, we're certainly not gonna be able to cap that. So, you know, we're looking at extracting dapple, you know, from, from those areas.
And that goes to my next concern about this plume that continues to go further and further out there, while Olin keeps delaying the process. What was it, 12 years they delayed it? Shame on them for what they're doing to this town. How do you, how do you clean a plume that's up on Hillside? I know you probably don't know where Hillside Way is, but it's miles away. How, how does that get cleaned up there, or? When you're concentrating on a site, do you, as you're cleaning that site, does it suck it back in?
Yeah.
Or do you go up to that area and, and go up and clean it?
So, again, that's part of the long-term option for the site, you know, dealing with the, the broader contamination at its fringes. You know, right now, our focus is on, you know, kind of the hotspot. And I can tell you, prior to, you know, this job, you know, running the Massachusetts section, I worked for 10 years on the cleanup of the base, military base, Massachusetts, military reservation. I'll tell you, there were 18 massive plumes of contamination, knocked out the water supply for four communities. These plumes went for miles. And, you know, over time, the Air Force and Army were required to put in treatment systems, you know, along the core of the plume, extract the stuff up, pump it way the heck back to the military base. They have a massive treatment system, several actually, on the base. And in 10 years I worked on that project, it was amazing, the, the progress they made at knocking down these plumes. You know, if you tackle the hottest stuff, the other stuff tends to flush quicker, that's, you know, attenuates over time. If you don't stop the source, it will never attenuate. You know, it'll keep me constant, and it'll spread further. So you gotta, you gotta get to the source and cut it off. That's, that's, that's paramount, and that's why we want this early interim action. You know, we've been actually saying this to Olin since 2016, when I first came on to manage, you know, the section. Early, you know, we want early interim action for the source to start to get source control in place. And I, I actually think when we do that, we will start seeing changes, even before we try to treat the periphery of the plume, we'll start seeing changes in it automatically.
So you keep an eye on that? So you were gonna concentrate, or you're gonna concentrate on that main issue, but
Right.
you keep an eye on the plume that's out there, because you may have to go out and treat that as well, right?
I mean, I know, you know, there's a lot of, you know, I know folks have seen that interim action FS, and one of the alternatives that Olin proposed in that was to turn on the municipal water supply wells and extract right there and treat it, and either, you know, put it back into municipal use or discharge it. And that's certainly one option, you know, to consider, but until, you know, until I think we address the source, that type of option would probably take years, because it'll just keep bleeding off of the stuff that's, that's the, you know, highest contamination.
Yeah, I don't think there's any appetite on, I don't want to speak for my colleagues to give authority to open those.
But that option, in concert with a more aggressive source option, may not be, you know, a bad idea. And that, but that's something for us to evaluate, you know, in the next phase of things. And I'm not saying, you know, you know, putting it back into public use, but even just treating at that point, you know, it is a point of, of a good point to treat, and treat it and discharge it after it's been, you know, cleaned to a safe level. So, but again, that's, that's the next decision. This decision right now is really focused on, you know, the dapple and the highest concentrations of groundwater.
And then one last question, if I could, and this is probably even going out further, regarding the cleanup. How is it, how is it moved? Is it moved by trucks to a, and where is it moved to? It, I mean, how do you, you're gonna extract that contamination out of it?
So right now, what Olin does for the dapple is they extract it, they pump it back up to the site, it's held in a tank until they have a certain volume, and then it's, it's picked up by a hazardous waste company, and it's taken to another facility that's capable of handling that waste. And actually, it's re-injected into another, like, confined aquifer that's, that's licensed to hold that stuff. We're looking, one of the things we are gonna look at, you know, and it's where we reached out to some experts, is, you know, are there better technologies for treating it before they, you know, ship it? Are there better technologies for con- Are there better technologies for con- um, concentrating it, if you will, before they ship it elsewhere? So that's, you know, what they're proposing, well, what they're doing with dapple right now. The groundwater itself, that's different, um, 'cause the groundwater doesn't have the same issues as the dapple. And, and we will be looking at alternatives for treating groundwater and probably, you know, discharging it, um, whether it's into a sewer system or into a stream. When we treat it, we'll treat it to a level it's safe to do that. You know, it's not just, you know, partially treated. If we're, if we're gonna treat it and discharge it, we have to meet, uh, water quality standards for, for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Certainly, there's been some great questions so far from my colleagues. If I could, just a few. You mentioned at the very beginning of your presentation, which I really appreciate, very informative, uh, for all of us. You mentioned at the beginning that you were open to taking input from anyone, you know, including residents. Could you talk to me a little bit more about how somebody might do that if they wanna give some input?
So, uh, when we issue, um, the proposed plan, uh, we basically create an abbreviated fact sheet that'll give the background, explain the options, uh, explain why we made this decision. And then we also conduct informational meetings. So we'll have a, an informational meeting that explains everything in the fact sheet that will, and we'll advertise that, we'll, you know, we'll work with you all. Usually, it's pretty wide, widely attended. We'll answer as many questions as people ask during that informational meeting. If they have other questions they wanna submit later, we'll, we'll take them. If they have comments, we'll take them. And, and that fact sheet, it explains how people can comment. They can comment by email. They can comment, you know, by mail. They can call, you know, generally, we like to have comments on our, our plan and a, and a written record. And, um, as part of the final decision, we actually have to create a response, a written response to any official comments that's, are submitted, no matter who they're submitted by. So as we get closer to issuing the cleanup plan, you know, we'll start planning, you know, a, a wider public meeting that, that is not only instructional, but gives people a chance to ask open questions and then also explains how they can get involved and comment.
Another thing was that I know on, on your presentation here, it says that, uh, some of the next steps is up to issue your proposed plan in the fall. You know, we're hoping that you could come back and, and, and speak with us again and hopefully, Mr. Di Lorenzo's feeling better and he can join us as well. You're welcome, obviously, to join us. But, uh, we're hoping that, you know, just a few months from now, you'll be able to give us another update, 'cause I know you'll be issuing your proposed plans. We'd love to have you back, uh, and stay on top of this. I think it's been said many times up here already tonight, and I totally agree, we're really depending on you. One member said it better than I can. It's a shame what Olin's doing to us, there's no question about it.
Yeah.
But while we have you here, uh, and I'm glad, uh, so glad to hear all this. And I also wanna recognize that many of our department heads are here as well to hear this presentation. I thank them for that. Uh, DPW Director, Assistant Town Manager, and Director of Public Health are all here, uh, in addition to our manager, who I'll give the opportunity to comment if he wants to in a minute. But, uh, something was mentioned earlier, and I wanna make sure we just stay on top of that tonight, 'cause I think it's important, 'cause you're here to help us out and, and, and help us. How can we help the residents on Cook Ave? I know my colleague mentioned it. I know the DPW Director's here, and I'm not gonna put him on the spot, but I know he's, I know the manager has asked him to come up with s- an estimate, you know, of what it might take to run water over there for the town. And, you know, so what should we be doing in your estimation? Does it make sense to invest money and, and get those, the clean water that they deserve? Or would we be jumping the gun? Because by then, we've already got Olin on the hook to, to do that. I mean, we all are in agreement, Olin should be on the hook for this no matter what. But is it likely that it gets cleaned up and that gets treated first? Or we have, take on a project like this? And I certainly give Mr. Woodsy up to chime in if he'd like, but I'm, I'm interested in your opinion on that. I mean, we hear, we, everybody in this room feels for those folks.
Yeah.
It's wrong, what, what they're going through. And we wanna make sure we do everything we can to be attentive to that. You know, to wait twelve years is not the answer I wanna give those folks.
Right.
And, you know, I don't care if there's only twelve houses over there, if there's one.
Right.
You know, it's not fair to them, so.
Well, I, I would say two things, actually. I would say it might be worthwhile for the town to send a, an official letter to the agency, to EPA, um, discussing, you know, your thoughts on this and what you've been contemplating, you know, a- as a plan to move forward to address this. You know, that, you know, basically encouraging a decision sooner rather than later. Like I said before, I, I do think our plan is to, um, you know, address this issue as part of this decision that's gonna come out in the fall. So, um, you know, anything you wanna put in writing ahead of time that steers us, you know, to address it, that, you know, would be helpful. I, you know, probably would make sense after just giving us the letter, you know, wait to see, you know, what decision we come to in the fall. Well, you know, well, it's, if we can do something, obviously, we'll have it in a proposed plan or we'll have it in a, in a document saying what we're, what we're doing and why. If we can't, we'll also be explaining that. And, and then if the, the town's not satisfied and they think something else should be done, you know, you can decide at that point. But I think it's, it's probably worthwhile to wait until, uh, you know, the agency makes an official decision. 'Cause if you would've, you know, a lot of, you know, we're gonna look at what's in the law, and that a lot, you know, requiring us to, to take an action there. And if you were to try to do it and seek, you know, reimbursement, you might be confined by that same law, I'm not certain. So it might be worth having that information, um, before you pursued something. So that, that's my recommendation. I think a letter would be helpful. Again, and that's not to say we're, it's not on our radar screen. It's very much on our radar screen, uh, as to making a decision on that. I think we thought we were gonna be making a decision a lot sooner. And so, it, you know, even if for some reason we can't get to getting our interim plan out, you know, we, we could probably issue at least a plan on that if, you know, once we finish our analysis of the information. So, um, so a letter, I think, from the town on that. You know, again, if you're getting more interest and more, uh, you're contemplating different options, uh, it might be helpful to have that on the record. Again, as we brief up the chain, the different, different entities, it's important for us to know what the town thinks is important to them, so.
I was afraid you might say that, and wait, uh, 'cause that's unfortunate for the folks over there. But it is worth noting that I know that, uh, the manager, uh, did have our DPW Director look into the possibility, in, in the spirit of looking at all possibilities. And so, Mike, I hate to put you on the spot, but I will, but I know, I just, I won't hold you to a, the big number, but you did look into the possibility of the town running a water line out there. Do you mind quickly speaking to that?
Oh, no, really. I've actually looked at this, uh, four, five times over the last fifteen to twenty years. And, uh, my estimate on a cost at this time, and I'd say it's more like a guesstimate, because it's just so many unknowns with contamination. As everyone knows, the fluids here, it's on a lot, chunk of bedrock. So I mean, a lot of dynamite up through there. Does that have consequences to the contaminants from the Olin site? If we hit any of those contaminants, do we need to, um, mitigate them and stop the construction progress and what have you? And, and we would have to take care of whatever we run into and slowly put properly. It'd be very time-consuming, uh, running into contaminants. Yeah, it's like an open checkbook when that happens. It gets very expensive very quickly. So, uh, even for us to just design and, uh, put it up to bid to get ready to do that project would probably take close to a year, so. Uh, I think the EPA's timeframe that we're here tonight seems like it would be, uh, the better solution if they come up with a favorable way that this completed. And if not, then, um, you know, yeah, we need to, we need to, we need to do, and probably sit with Town Council and discuss, uh, things, uh, at a more technical level.
Any of the options that you've looked at? I know you talked earlier about running the line from a different spot instead of up the hill. Do you have any of that in writing? Or I don't know how you've done it, if you've done it with a consultant? No? Okay.
Uh, that would be going through private property and so, which presents different challenges. There's no way to access, do that from the backside.
But even just knowing technically what you have looked at, if you feel, feel what's the most feasible technically, given what you know about the community in that area? Again, that might be helpful information for us to have if it's readily, I don't want, not ma- I don't wanna ask you to do some intense study, but if you've, if you've got something.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to base it, feel anyway. I will, uh, do that, um, this week and talk about a couple of other things and, and, uh...
Yeah, I mean, I know, we know that Olin looked at options. Uh, and we, you know, haven't looked at that report in a while, and we're gonna dust that off as part of this evaluation to see what they did. But, um, uh, you know, it would be helpful if you've looked at something different. Again, if, if, after we look at the data and we feel we have legal authority to actually take an action, you know, dealing with issues like access, you know, we have, we have authorities to do that, that probably are different than your authorities. So that doesn't intimidate us. But, you know, tech- technical aspect of that, it is, it is complicated because of the ledge.
Right.
Uh, and I, it was today, I think it was the first time I heard somebody suggest, hey, why not down Jewel Drive and, you know?
Up through the ledge.
Up through the ledge.
I mean, either one's a challenge, but, um...
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate you looking into this for us. And, uh, we, I know we, for a fact, we will definitely be sending a letter, uh, sooner rather than later. And, and we've done that, uh, before. I know we'll do it again. It's gonna take everything we've got, and that includes, uh, our state and federal delegations, which we've written to as a board in the past, you know, looking for their support. And, uh, and I know we do have their support. I know, I see, uh, State Representative Dave Robinson's here, and, and I really appreciate that. And, and I just wanna give you the opportunity, if you wanna add. I know, uh, you're fighting for this on Beacon Hill in regards to this.
Yeah, I mean, this is, obviously, it's a, it's a long process, and it, to be frank, worries me a little bit that we're reconsidering something that Mr. Di Lorenzo identified, the sarcophagus. I know there was been, it's not you particularly, Olin was refuting, right? I think it was a twenty-four, twenty-five year lifespan. So, well, it's not cracking. Well, it is cracking. Well, it's not airtight. It is airtight. And again, that's, that's Olin messing around. But I believe that since they've already tried to deceive us once, the only way to ensure they're not deceiving us again is a complete removal of the soil on the site. And just like the, the local folks here, who are also fighting hard for everybody from Cook Street across the way, this plume's now going on miles. And something that I, and some of the other state officials reached out, and I would to ask if the EPA has addressed it, because it's disappointing me. I found out the D V P hasn't really considered. There's a major housing development going on across the border in Woburn called the Ledges Pride. And I believe there's four hundred thousand cubic yards of mountaintop being removed. And so, we, as a delegation, wrote asking to see if there's any, um, consideration that was given to possibly agitating the plume. A lot of material that would've absorbed or diverted the water has now been shifted. And I'm not quite certain, because of its, I think it's only one point six miles apart. If this massive, again, if this massive amount of soil and bedrock before that used to divert it, is that now impacting the plume? And has there been any consideration on mitigation for this potential new source of water, which might expedite the spread of the plume to...
You know where they're getting that, their water's supply from?
In Woburn?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not quite sure. My concern was more of just the stormwater seepage down into the bedrock, thus...
Oh, I see.
Again, I, I share the same concerns with you. I don't believe that this is a hard and pervious surface below that soil. I think Olin has downplayed that. I think it's leaked out far more than they're leading on to. And I'm worried that this construction project, the well intention of affordable housing, not only is disrupting, it's disrupting the neighborhoods, but putting people's health and women to that risk by allowing that plume to spread quicker than our previously analytical models would call for. And it really is something that I'm quite concerned about with. So if there's any sort of commentary or any sort of consideration we can give in the short term to make sure that that's not happening, I think it'll provide a lot of comfort to not just myself, but the people that live here too. So, I appreciate it, Mr. Chan. That was one of my prime concerns, and thank you for letting me bring it to your attention this evening.
Thank you, Dave, for being here. Appreciate your support on this as well. Mr. Manager, do you have something you wanna add?
Uh, yes, certainly with regard to the Cook Ave issue, uh, we are, have, uh, talked about that. I, I think it's, um, fair to say the cost, uh, is in the hundreds of thousands, if not perhaps in excess of, uh, that, uh, from what I understand, obviously, it's, it is just a guesstimate at this point because of the, uh, constraints, um, and the challenges that would go into running a line, uh, to that location. It, it is no question that, uh, the people on Cook Ave should've had, um, a reliable water source, um, years ago. I understand that, you know, in prior conversations with EPA, there were, um, challenges in terms of legally what, um, could be done on EPA's part. But we will certainly get a letter out, uh, to you, um, pursuing that. One of the things I just wanted to reference, um, was, uh, one of the options that was identified for the purpose of groundwater. And it certainly triggered, uh, a lot of concern, I think, amongst residents. And that was this option to activate the towns, two of the towns, um, currently disabled or inactive, uh, water wells and to run that, uh, water through some kind of an upgraded, uh, treatment system, presumably at the Butter's Row Treatment Plant, and then perhaps cycle it into the public water supply. I just wanted, again, um, get confirmation from you that, first of all, uh, the fact that this is a interim draft document, uh, is, that is only, uh, a possibility that has been put forward by, um, by Olin and that that is not something at this point in time that EPA is endorsing. And, and I guess the other, uh, along those lines, I would ask, is it, how, how common is it for, uh, the responsible party to be, um, in, in a document such as this, uh, essentially making their case for a particular position?
Yeah, okay, so the first question, you, you're correct. Uh, this is Olin's first draft at a feasibility study, um, with a proposal, what they think, you know, as part of the feasibility study, you know, the outcome is to try to evaluate alternatives and pick the one that makes the most sense based on the criteria. Of course, there's a lot of subjectivity in that analysis, um, and it's not uncommon when we have a responsible party take the first cut at drafting one of these documents, that they put their own spin on it, um, and, uh, you know, propose what they think is, is the right thing. But this is the first draft of the document. It is not an EPA-approved document. As I mentioned earlier, we don't believe it. It contains the full range of alternatives that we wanted to have evaluated. We don't endorse any of the alternatives in it, you know, just yet. Again, our, our goal, um, you know, is to target the, the high areas, the source areas. And our opinion, you know, going at it the way they've proposed, which is, um, you know, extracting water from the furthest point and treating it and either discharging into a surface water body or trying to put it back into productive use. You know, we haven't come out with any formal position yet, but I don't think that's typical of what we would do, given what our goal is. It's not consistent with the goals, so it's not something at this point we'd be recommending. You know, with that said, you know, we need to get through the whole process, finish the feasibility study, uh, and then we'll put out, you know, our proposal. So, yeah, again, it's not something we endorse right now. I, I don't think it'll be something we will endorse as part of this interim action. Our, our goals are different. Our goal's how to really tackle, you know, source control first. So, yeah, we, we, we will, you know, take the document they've given us. We will likely supplement it with some other alternatives. We will explain our position even on the alternatives that they've put forth, how they evaluate them. We may, you know, say that's Olin's position, EPA's position on this, you know, how it meets the various criteria is different, and, and put both out, you know, for comment for people to consider. There may be folks, you know, that, that think, oh, it's a great, it's a great idea. I don't know. But we have to put it all out there. We'll put Olin's alternative out there, not as a preferred alternative. We'll pick our own preferred alternative and we'll put it out. But when we go out for comment, we'll have the whole range of alternatives out there, including those that Olin is advocating for. That's, you know, to keep the record pure and give them fair, you know, opportunity, you know, to put their position out there, whether they, um, whether they do it officially with their document or they, and they give us comment through the comment period. Olin, you know, wants to get their position out there for everybody to consider, whether you, whether we agree with it or not.
And is it fair to say that if the town decided that it did not want to reactivate these wells, EPA cannot compel the town to reactivate them for purposes of, you know, this... this solution?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I would say, I guess, a little differently. I mean, if the town did not want to use the water from these wells to supplement your water supply, you know, we, you know, even if it's treated, we don't, you know, we don't generally do that. That's not to say, and I'm, I'm talking way in the future, if we decided we need one way to clean this plume up is to turn on a well, treat it, and discharge it someplace else into a tr- you know, a stream, we, if that's the best thing to do to actually get the thing cleaned up, you know, we would put that in a plan. But that, you know, we, we don't force the community to take a water supply that they, you know, don't want. We consider the community's input into our decision-making process. So we've had, I mean, you know, interestingly, you know, what were the most recent case? It was up in New Hampshire with the P's Air Force Base, where it was actually a contaminated public water supply serving the base and, and other communities. In that situation, the community actually were okay with having the water if it was treated down to, like, purity. You know, they want it treated to safe drinking water levels. They, they were, you know, okay with that as an option, but not every community is. So that's, that is a decision for down the road. I, you know, I'm not certain if extracting from those wells, you know, as part of a long-term cleanup plan is something we should rule out. And so.
But clearly, and I presume, but certainly don't know the situation in, in the P's Air Force Base case, there, there would be an extensive amount of pilot testing to confirm that the water met state and federal drinking water standards.
Yes, there was. They had to run it for, it's six months to a year, I think, at, at capacity, like, as they were running it to serve the, you know, their typical load, and prove over time that they had treated it, they were capable of treating it to the level that was satisfactory to the community. And they had to build it to certain specifications too, that were different than if you were just building it to treat it for the purposes of getting the contamination out.
Okay.
So it can be done, but I'm not saying that's the outcome that will make sense here. But I, I guess I just want to be clear that as part of cleaning up an aquifer, it may be that, that those wells are in a great location for us to, you know, do some of the, you know, remediation work needed to clean up the aquifer. You know, generally, you know, I, it's very effective to have the wells located in the highest areas. But then when you're at a leading edge of contamination, it sometimes makes sense to, to get it at that leading edge as well. We've done a combination of those kinds of things down at the military base. That's why I'm speaking about that.
And you had mentioned earlier with regard to the containment cell. As I recall, in conversations, I guess, with representatives from GFI, there was some discussion about the prospect of some kind of development that might be close to or perhaps on top of that containment cell area. If I understand the interim document here that we're, have been reviewing, there's the expectation that the current containment cell was really a temporary measure, and that there needs to be a, a permanent cell, if you will, so that, i- is it fair to say that for any kind of development activity to take place over that cell, that at some point, that they run the risk of having to deconstruct whatever they do there, because it's going to need to be some kind of a permanent solution for that cell?
Well, and that's what I think we're trying to say in terms of being able to work cooperatively. You know, it is possible for us to work cooperatively with designing the permanent cap in concert with a building, a permanent building that goes on the permanent cap. You know, again, we've done this, you know, before where we, you know, cap it and then, you know, put a building on top and construct it in a certain way. I mean, the goal, there's a couple of goals. The goal is to minimize infiltration into that area. You know, the, the, if you can minimize infiltration, you're minimizing the thing that's going to drive the contamination to leak out. That's generally what causes contamination to migrate. Rainwater comes down and it starts flowing with groundwater. If you minimize the rainwater coming down, it's very effective at containing liquid waste. So, in one case, you know, what's more effective? You know, a building that's not leaking. I think we would probably take, you know, a little bit more aggressive, not just a building, but, you know, a cap that has the, you know, layers that we usually require when we're trying to create a, a protective cap that minimizes infiltration in concert with a building. And the key on that is to construct the building so that, you know, we don't have settlement in that area that could interfere with the cap, so it doesn't interfere with that slurry wall that's already there. You know, I say, you know, it's, the slurry wall is, we don't feel is as effective as Olin claims it is, but that's not to say it doesn't serve a purpose and has some effectiveness in it. So, you know, any construction on that site we'd want done in a way that doesn't, you know, damage that, that slurry wall. So we'd be looking at protecting the slurry wall, putting a cap, and then engineering possibly a building on top of that.
I guess my only, my final comment is, is with respect to redevelopment, from my perspective, I, I believe that the remediation should dictate redevelopment and not redevelopment dictating remediation. And that's my biggest concern, is that if a development comes in, whether it's NET or GFI, that I, I, what I don't want to see happen is, even though the intent may be otherwise, that the new, new development now forces remediation to work around whatever is constructed there. It should be the other way around.
Right. And, and I understand and I agree. And I, I actually think it works best if we can do them in concert, because sometimes, you know, our remediation, if we knew, you know, we had the foresight to see how a site could be used, we would have done it differently. And so, and they're equally as protective. What I'm, I guess, trying to say is, is a way you can make the remedy equally protective and have a productive use. And that's truly what our goal is. And we've done it on a number of sites. I've got actually, there's a brochure I could share. It shows all the sites in New England where, you know, we've actually had redevelopment. It's great, successful redevelopment on sites that were NPL sites and Brownfield sites. So it's, I think it's best if it's done in concert. But with that said, our primary concern is making sure the remedy's protective first. And, and that's what we'll be focusing on as we talk with GFI. You know, if they, you know, proceed, we'll be making sure we've got what we need in place for the remedy. Even if, you know, we haven't picked the remedy yet, and we're looking at ranges of alternatives for the cap. You know, we may pick a middle-of-the-range cap, for example, because of the circumstances there. You know, we could say to GFI, we're not certain yet what it's going to be. You want to build a Cadillac cap, go build a Cadillac cap. You know, it's going to be more protective, you know. So, you know, these are some of the things we could do. They could, we could say to GFI, you know, if you want to wait till we pick a remedy, you know, we can work with you when you get, pick the remedy. If you don't want to wait, then assume, you know, build the best, put, put before us a, a plan to build the best cap you can build, you know, that we feel is going to be more than protective. And put the onus on them. You could end up getting a better remedy than what, you know, we normally predict, you know, just, just because there's a interest in trying to develop the site. So we're, I mean, I, I found it to be more successful, frankly, when we can work them together, as opposed to, you know, we're going to cap this, you know, this land, this containment area. It's part of the remedy. I'm sure it's going to involve some kind of cap. You know, we're going to tackle the dapple that's in there. And, you know, if we build it a certain way, you know, that we're not thinking about anything else going on top of it, that may be, you know, may end up being a parking lot or just a cap. And so, you know, it's, is that in the best interest over, over time for the town? I guess that's maybe a call eventually to make. I think if we could try to orchestrate this in a way that gives you guys options, good options for that site, make it productive, that's the best outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick, 45 seconds. I'm glad the manager, you talked about that a few minutes ago, about it's not EPA's idea relative to the Olin interim document. And it's right here on page ES-three. And it states that they'll look into, that's their idea. The NDMA is basically to shoot it to a filtration plant here in town with some up, with updates, and then make it portable water. I'm not going to beat the drum. I touched upon that a couple meetings ago, but I'm glad to see EPA would definitely be on top of it. I want to ask you a question, maybe putting you on the spot, maybe not. You talked about the Woburn area, of that contaminated area. And it's really not that far from Olin. It's probably about three Tom Brady passes away on a good day. But anyway, can I ask you, if you want to answer that, what was or is worse, the site here in Olin with contamination, or that facility, that's what is it, the Anderson Train Station in Target? You know, I know it's a tough question, but.
Yeah, no, it is a tough question. And, and they're very different. They presented very different challenges. That was different in that, you know, those hides that were buried there, they had other issues. They had presented odor, you know, issues and, you know, other things like that, that, that made it difficult, you know, to come up with what the rem- the long-term remedy was. There were also, you know, a lot of complex groundwater issues over there, you know, that they had to engineer around. And it was an area, it wasn't just one parcel. It's several parcels with multiple owners. And everybody wanted to do their thing. And, and an area that was highly valuable because of its location and the hub of two intersections. So that just created a lot of challenges. And yeah, the contamination there, you know, even like, much like the contamination at Wells G and H, it's, it's not bad stuff. I will say, Olin is, you know, definitely, and I've seen a lot of sites, it is, it is a complicated site. And it's, you know, it's got a lot of contamination underground there. And that's why we brought in, I would rank it up there, you know, in terms of its difficulty and, and the nature of that contamination. And, and that's why, again, we brought in, you know, our best hydrogeologist, who's working with some of the best people that we have at ORD, to try to, you know, solve the problem. And, and, you know, Olin is, you know, definitely, you know, they've tried to tackle it by doing this pilot test, and they've realized it's expensive to dispose of this stuff. And that's probably, I think, part of the reason why they've delayed doing more, because it's costly to get it out of the ground.
And I appreciate that, what you're saying. So, from what you're saying, I put the words in your mouth, Olin sounds worse than what's happening in Woburn. That's what it sounds like. I know, you know, we're not trying to make the commitment here, but it's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, it is. It's complicated. It really is. And it's, you know, it's unfortunate that it took out your water supply. It's unfortunate that people are drinking bottled water after all this time. You know, those are the kinds of things that, again, after, you know, 12 years and we don't have a cleanup plan, I, you know, we, we should. And, and that's what we're fighting for right now.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Olin's dragging their feet. Take them to the fire. That's what we need you to do. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. I know that we've, you can see how important this is to us. We've only been talking about this for almost two hours now, but it's so important for us to get this update from you. And I'm glad to hear that you have the best in the business working on this on our behalf. And I think that includes both of you. So we really appreciate your time. I think you've, I've got you, hopefully, I've been extending the invitation now. You're certainly more than welcome to come back in the fall, September, October, when you have your proposed plan. And I know that we'll definitely take you up on your offer for folks to be able to give input from our community. I know there'll be some that are eager to do that. We'll definitely be sending off a le- a letter to the agency as discussed. You mentioned a brochure. Hopefully you can make that available to us. And we will also make sure that your PowerPoint from tonight, that's been made available to all of those in the audience and the members of the media, will be available on our site in the near, our website in the near future, so everybody can see it. And, so if you didn't get a chance to see the PowerPoint tonight, hopefully we'll get a chance in the real near future.
So the two things with respect to brochures, I know we are working with work on a fact sheet that explains, you know, some of the technical things. They asked us to, to put that together, so that should be done soon. We'll, we'll share that. And then the, the other brochure I talked about was, that kind of the success we've had at, you know, redeveloping contaminated sites. And you can kind of see the variety of projects that we, you know, we've had success at it at other sites in, in New England.
Great. That'd be great to make that public as well. So, thank you so much for all your expertise, the update, your advice in regards to Cook Ave, and everything else you provided for us tonight. We really appreciate your time. We look forward to hearing from you again in the fall.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Do you have a question?
Hold on one second. I'm just gonna, I think we're going to have some time built in at the, the end of the public comments. But, thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate you both.
Thank you.
Could we get a little stand?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are on to communications. Mr. Hall?
Just under communications, I have a memo from Joe LeBeau, who's our business and utilities manager over at the DPW. We are making available two residents' rain barrels provided through the Great American Rain Barrel Company. The barrels are priced at $69 a barrel plus tax, which is a 40% discount off of what you can get at retail, I'm told. And there's information on the town's website that, that residents can go to to order them. They're actually ordered directly from the company itself. The website is www.GreatAmericanRainBarrel.com backslash community, or call 800-251-2352. The deadline for orders is June 23. And pickup will be on Saturday, June 29, 9 to 11, at the DPW admin office on 115 Andover Street. Also, from Mr. LeBeau is a memo to me advising me of a recent award that the department received from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. This is the Water Conservation. On behalf of the town, I accepted an award at the Public Works, a Public Water Systems Award Ceremony that was held in Devens on May 7, 2019. The Water Conservation Award is given to those systems that achieved the following in 2018: Met the average of 65 resident gallons per capita daily and 10% unaccounted-for water usage standard, and implemented minimum mandatory water use restrictions, provided a website showing conservation-related information, and while not required, used less water than the previous year. Wilmington also received this award in 2015. So that certainly goes to the importance that we place on the town's water supply. Also wanted to provide a memo to the board from Paul Looney. He'll recall that at the last selectman's meeting, there was discussion about a couple of loca- relocation of.
No problem. I'm sorry.
No, just, I didn't interrupt. I was saying, I don't know, do you really want these EPA folks to wait? Maybe they could take that up now, and then they can leave. I just thought I'd ask. That's all. I didn't mean to, but, you know.
It's the pleasure of the board. We can, we're going to go to public comment, take it out of order, out of respect for our fans of EPA. I'm happy to do that. Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Are there any public comments?
Ethan Sawyer, 58 Lawrence Street. I just got a question. You had mentioned at one point that you had new toxicity information coming out with regards to NDMA, and with respect to the record of decision that you'd be issuing in the fall. I didn't know if that was new information that's publicly available, or that's something that, that you're still working on?
We're still working on it, actually. And I, I probably won't, you know, finalize it until. Um, and I, I probably won't, you know, finalize it, uh, until the whole decision process is then unfolded. It has to do, you know, we, you know, about NDMA's toxicity with respect to ingestion drinking it. Um, and then there's a new pathway that we're looking at, which is inhalation. So, if somebody was showering with it, um, that's what we're really looking at. We're rerunning the numbers looking at that.
And, and those are things that you're working on at a federal level? Nothing to do with anything that the State, um, Department of Public Health might be doing?
No, it's not related to that. It's specifically related to the cleanup.
Okay. Um, and then, and then it sounds like, I mean, as far as the, any interim actions that you might decide on, that, um, whatever those actions are, for, for interim purposes, wouldn't really positively or negatively affect, or, or make the site any more or less suitable for redevelopment necessarily? This is just basically a turnkey, right? I mean, just to kind of slow things down until, until you get that final plan, that accurate?
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, our goal, first of all, when we're doing cleanup plans, is to, is to focus on picking the cleanup that we think is protective. Um, and again, there's ways of, you know, doing that that also help facilitate redevelopment. If there isn't a redevelopment proposal on the table, you know, we'll assume it's gonna be some industrial commercial use and we'll clean it up accordingly and, you know, call for a plan, you know, based on that. But if we have a plan, it, it's best to try to integrate it if we can, you know?
And, I mean, it sounds like it, it doesn't really matter to the EPA what the redevelopment is, right? I mean, it's just whatever's proposed. Is there anything that, any resources that the EPA has that we as a community can kind of reach out to? Potential options, potential redevelopment options to bring maybe more people to the table? Um, I know that I, I saw some stuff on the EPA website having to do with, um, green energy initiatives, you know, whether it was, I think that there was a certain referred to as partnership where, you know, they were doing things with solar power or, you know, other renewable energy sources.
Yeah, and actually, if you look in this publication I'm talking about, it goes through all those different options and some are more common on certain sites. Um, you know, we have provided services, um, to help communities, you know, evaluate options for what would work best. Actually, we're working with the town of Acton right now on a nuclear metal site. Um, they're trying to do some kind of visioning for that site. Um, and it, it, it works best when it's a property that is under the control of the town. Like, in other words, it's hard for you to control what's gonna happen here when you don't own it. You know, and, and really, it's up to Olin to decide who they want to sell it to. And they can sell it to anybody for any reason. That's not to say somebody's gonna want to buy it without knowing they can do it, without, you know, getting the appropriate approvals. So, you know, I, I mean, I think, you know, certainly visioning can, you know, these types of, we have a contractor that comes in and asks the town and does interviews with folks to ask what you want and, you know, give options in that regard. But, uh, it's more like a, a planning, uh, what's done by a planning board. Um, you know, we could, we could talk to work, we get, it's the same contractor that's working with us on, coming up with the fact sheet. They've done, you know, things like this with other communities to try to, you know, look at redevelopment options. Something we could, we could see if it could bring some resources to the table for that.
I appreciate that. And then I just have one, one last question. And it kind of had to do with that, because you said that if, if someone were to try to redevelop the property and, you know, things didn't go as planned and it, and it really was actually having a negative impact on the, on the property, that they could actually eventually become a responsible party as well. Um, I don't know if there's anything that the EPA does at, at your level to sort of ensure that anyone who comes in has maybe different, but also appropriate bonding or insurance for whatever it is that they're gonna put on the site, because, you know, something like this, we're talking big dollars. Um, so I, I would get concerned that someone might come in, doesn't go according to plan, and then we really have no recourse against that person or that company, because they just fold and they go away and we're still right back to square one, except now we've got this other problem. Or if that's something that maybe the town has to address at our level to, to ensure that someone, if, if it was decided that maybe there's a unique risk associated with it, that maybe they had different insurance or different bonding or something.
Mm-hmm. We haven't really had to, you know, that I can think of, you know, uh, deal with that as an issue. And what's interesting about Olin is that we still have the responsible parties on the hook, um, you know, regardless of the development, they'll be on the hook. Uh, you know, so oftentimes, we'll go back to them and say, you know, found this issue, fix it, you know? If you don't think you caused it, you go, go get the other responsible party that you think caused it. Um, you know, it's that joint and severable liability within the statute that allows us to, you know, go after whom, whom we feel, you know, is ultimately responsible, obviously, Olin and the other PRPs that have owned the site. Um, but in terms of, you know, I haven't encountered an example, I could certainly ask around if we've, you know, done something like what you talked about. Uh, it's not something that we would commonly do. I don't know if you know, Kevin, it's...
Yeah, I draw like comparison where, after we have a rod, if we were to enter into a consent decree with Olin and the other responsible parties, there'd be a financial assurance component to ensure that there's gonna be money available to do that work. When a company comes in and they're trying to get BFPP status to do a redevelopment, there's no financial assurance component. So there's nothing directly analogous, sort of along the lines you're thinking, at least not to my knowledge. Um, no, that's not very helpful, but it's...
Yeah. I mean, sometimes I think some companies just choose not to sell their property because they don't even want to open up the possibility that somebody could come in and do that.
And make a bigger problem for them.
Right. You know, Grace and Acton's holding onto that parcel. I don't think they'll ever sell it.
Yeah.
Um, because they don't, I don't think they want to deal with having another party come in and do something that could exacerbate the problem.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Rob, Solar Twenty, Marjorie Rowe, just one question. Uh, referred to a couple of times here tonight was the Ledgers project, um, where there's up to a twenty-five-hundred-pound charge twice a day being detonated on that property, sending, uh, vibrations through houses as far as Navajo Drive. Um, is that affecting bedrock and widening the fractures in it? And if it's determined that, that is somehow exacerbating the plume or allowing it to, to go through bedrock quicker, are they, is main drilling, uh, or the developer, is it possible that they could be added as, uh, a PRP in the future?
If we could draw that connection, I'd like to get more information. I took notes on, I'm not certain who the best person is to get more information on that project and relationship. You, you have some information, I'll, I'll work with Martha on getting more information about that, but, yeah, I mean, and if they're, you know, deton, if they're low on rock, depending on how close it is to the site, it's, it's possible they could be affecting, you know, groundwater flow. Um, and yeah, if they change the situation, exacerbate the problem, it could become liable.
So is this, are you got, I mean, if it's brought to your attention, is, is there some way that you guys can monitor that activity over there to protect Wilmington's interest?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, like I said, I'll follow up with Martha and find out how close it is to, you know, to the site. And, you know, we have, we have some technical expertise that, you know, we could ask, bring to bear to say, you know, technically, you think it's close enough? I, I don't know, I'm not a hydrogeologist, so I, I don't know how close you have to be to really, but we could certainly ask our hydrogeologists to take a closer look at it.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest certainly, and we can provide the contact information, uh, it's otherwise online, but the building commissioner in, in Woburn as well as the fire chief, who I believe is, uh, in our case anyways, uh, responsible for monitoring the blasting, um, so the Woburn Fire Chief and the building commissioner are certainly well aware of this project. And I can pass along their contact information if that's helpful.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, the project manager that works on both Wells G and H and Industrialplex, both in Woburn, is probably very, you know, has connections, so I can talk to him as a starting point. Um, 'cause I know they are putting, you know, 'cause a couple of residential developments on, on Industrialplex. So I'll, I'll, you know, I'm glad you brought it to my attention. I'll definitely follow up on our end to see where it is in proximity to the Olin site and see what we know about it. You may already have looked at it from the perspective of its impact on, you know, Industrialplex and, and Wells G and H.
Public comments, ma'am.
Martha Stevenson, Southern Chandler Road, and the president of the Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee, which is the citizen group associated with the Superfund site, you know, funded through, uh, it's called a technical assistance grant. We work closely with G and D's inception. Um, just a couple of quick comments. Um, Leon, I, I think it's kind of ironic that the interim report that you're currently evaluating considers an early intervention to remove the dapple when Olin has known since nineteen eighty that there's NDMA on the site. So, even though EPA's only been involved about ten or twelve years, Olin has been, um, on, on the radar as, as a contaminated site since Olin bought the property in nineteen eighty. So it's really much longer than just the past ten or twelve years that they've been delaying. So I, um, applaud the selectmen for being a little upset with Olin for dragging a fee. They're, they're actually... That said, work has, has consistently said that we want the contaminated, or the containment area rather not to just be kept, but to be remedied. Um, you mentioned possibly removing the dapple, possibly removing the contaminated, so we think strongly, since that was the first point on the property where NDMA was identified and concerned, that there's stuff down there that should not be left in place, regardless of how effective any cap would be. We're also, uh, a bit concerned with the promise or the thought that Olin's gonna be agreeable to paying cleanup costs, which are gonna be millions of dollars, when they won't even issue a credible remedial investigation feasibility study on groundwater contamination. That said, I, I'm wondering, what, what's the status of a technical infesibility waiver that Olin has been talking about?
Yeah, they haven't, uh, they haven't actually proposed that any further beyond their initial, um, discussion with us. I think they realize that they haven't done enough work to demonstrate that they qualify for such a waiver. What Martha's referring to is under the statute, um, and under our regulations, you know, generally, we require that, you know, act for be restored to its beneficial use unless it's technically impracticable to do so. And that's a whole evaluation they have to do. And they have, as part of that, they have to demonstrate they've controlled the source. They haven't done an adequate demonstration. Originally, they were trying to put that out as their original plan to say it was technically impracticable to do anything. Um, and I think they've kind of come to the realization that they don't have enough information to make that kind of presentation yet. So they haven't, they haven't, uh, put it, put it forward any further to us. And I don't know if and when they plan to. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll send the rest of our comments in writing.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mr. Carr, you have some?
Yeah, I had one, one quick follow-up in regards to the Ledgers project and the blasting that's taking place. If you find out that it is affecting, um, the area, do you have the authority to stop them from blasting?
Um, I would, I would, I would think we do. How we would go about doing that, I'm not certain. You know, we haven't had to deal with that. And we've, there's been, I, you know, we've had things like this happen very, very close to, to some sites and had it not affect it at all. So I really have to kind of look at the hydrogeology, um, you know, to, to just figure out if it's, if it's gonna be an issue. I, I'm, first reaction is it's probably not an issue, but it's worth us looking into. Um, and we, again, I look at like what we did at, there's another site in Mass, Nianza, and they were blasting right next to the landfill, right behind it to put in a residential. And they were able to do it and they didn't cause, you know, any issues. And we, you know, sometimes it's, it's actually the monitoring data that shows and you don't just know it immediately, you have to monitor over time. Um, so it might be worth, depending on its proximity, this for us to be aware, that we can make sure we've got the appropriate monitoring points in place to evaluate it. But yeah, I mean, I, if, if it's exacerbating the problem and we can prove it, you know, with, with the information we have, I'm sure we could contact them and say, do you, you know, you know, you incur impossible liability for what you're doing. So, you know, using those, you know, those authorities, I'm sure we could...
Well, can that letter be sent? Anyways, i- if you have to do testing for the future in, in order to prove it, can you send them a letter today to say, there's a possibility that this may happen, we're going to be testing that area over the next six months? And you may be liable?
Yeah, it depends how strong the information is. It really is.
Okay.
Um, and again, I, you know, we've done a lot of blasting at sites nearby and it really hasn't caused a problem. So, you know, I don't want to rule it out, 'cause I don't know how big it is and I don't know how close it is. Um, but, and there's a lot that I have to say too. One of the areas that's unfamiliar, you know, the bedrock is something that hasn't been studied enough at, at the Olin site. So we don't, we don't have our arms around it just yet. And so if we try to go out with a decision that's premature and not supported by any scientific evidence, we won't get very far with that. So we, you know, if we're gonna do something like stop a development, we, we're gonna have to have the information that supports that type of an action, not we think it's a problem. We probably have to be more definitive than that. But I, I do want to look into it and be prepared to address, and I'm sure these kinds of questions will come up when we're issuing our proposed plan. So it's good for us to know it now and we'll follow up.
Okay. Public comment?
I just want to quickly, I apologize to the manager during communications. Appreciate the, uh, chairman taking it out of order. I just wanted to make sure that while I hang around a couple hours, and don't forget what I said, big brother, big sister. Some brownie points, I got you all two hours earlier. Don't forget us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me what the message was, whether it was staying or allowed to leave.
Well, thank you very much. But I can assure you, it won't be a couple more, more hours, Mr. McCoy, hope not. Thank you so much for coming in. We really appreciate it. And I also am getting a request for a five-minute recess slash bathroom break and I'm happy to accommodate that. All right. So is there a motion to recess?
Yes, I moved to recess.
A very strong motion from my colleague, Mr.... A second. All those in favor? Sheen Adams will be right back. Thank you, folks. Okay, we're back and, uh, from a short recess, and we are still on the public comments. So is there anybody else who would like to be heard? Public comments? Sir?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Muhaus, one thirty-six, one rose. Apologize, I just arrived at the end of the previous discussion. Uh, I'd like to offer some thoughts on a board to consider item, uh, subject matter that I think you have to take up. Is it appropriate to do that now or to wait until that?
Sure, we're happy to entertain any public comment at that, at this time. Sure.
Okay. Well, uh, with regard to agenda item number six, Mr. Chairman, uh, I understand that the board is considering, uh, some action with regard to a committee that has been formed, at least to my understanding, to, uh, look at different alternatives for a skating rink for the town of Wilmington. And I just, uh, wanted to offer some historical perspective, if I may. Having been in the seat that, uh, you now all have tonight, I appreciate all the time and the effort that you all make to try and accommodate different interests. But I just want to remind the board that, um, the young people who participate in skating activities and who play hockey, and when I refer to the young people, I'm referring to toddlers through, uh, literally varsity, boys and girls, uh, hockey programs. They're in a very unique situation. Uh, they literally, they, they don't have a home. Um, and I think that this town has shown and continues to show on an annual basis through funding of the Parks and Grounds Department, all the many fields and parks and courts, et cetera, uh, as, as the town should do and as I support. All of those resources are expended on annual basis, uh, for all of those other sports. And, you know, I'm referring to lacrosse and soccer and football and baseball and softball and field hockey and the list goes on. It wasn't that long ago that town meeting, uh, to the order of about four hundred to seven appropriated two-point-two-five million dollars in order to resolve what is really an imminent problem, uh, for hockey players and skaters in this town. And... And they simply may not have any place to play, let alone at a, you know, at a sustainable price come three or four years from now. And I really hope that the board and whatever decision it makes really is making it a priority and maintaining a focus on what those 400 residents directed us to do as a town some four and a half years ago. So I know the hours later, I don't want to go on, but I do think it's very important to, you know, to express how important it is and how time is short for those particular sports, those particular young athletes. And anything that this board can do to maintain, you know, a narrow focus and a priority on letting this committee get to work and asking them to focus on that priority would be much appreciated. I know I'm not the only one that feels that way. There were 400 people or so that felt that way just a short time ago at a town meeting. So I appreciate the board's time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll jump back to our last communication. Mr. Hall?
I received a memo from Paul Looney, the town engineer. This is a follow-up from the last selectman's meeting where the board considered moving of utility poles. This was a part of a National Grid effort. You'll recall that the directive at that point was to set up a meeting to visit the site, look at the location of these poles, invite residents in the neighborhood to attend. All that was done. Paul Looney participated in that, in that meeting, and there were some residents who did participate as well. The residents did not have concerns about the proposed location of these poles as long as the poles were located in a public right-of-way. What did come to the attention of the town engineer was that there may be some issues with respect to the Wetlands Protection Act. And so the representatives from National Grid have been advised to consult with Planning and Conservation to determine whether, in fact, they do need to go before the Conservation Commission. So based upon that, it would be my recommendation that the board of selectmen take no further action on the requested permit pending that outcome.
Thank you. Onto board to consider. We have a board to consider appointing representatives of local sports organizations as additional members to evaluate and to evaluate for an ice skating rink or indoor recreational facility. So if you recall, we talked about this at our last meeting, and I think the one before that as well. Very discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mr. Newhouse, and the ice rink should be the priority. But I also heard from a couple of colleagues saying, why don't we look beyond that? Once again, that ice rink should always be the priority. But if we have it within our means to do something like that, and I agree with a couple of my colleagues when they said, maybe some type of indoor recreational facility. Now, I know it's at its infancy. I wouldn't have a problem entertaining it if we can do it legally, I wouldn't have a problem. But always, the ice rink was always the priority, and I would never forget that whatsoever. And you're right, Mr. Newhouse, a lot of people came and they were all supportive, as well as myself, you, and the other members of the board back at that town meeting. So I just heard a couple of colleagues express an interest, and I said, great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyra?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I too would echo my colleagues' comments and Mr. Newhouse's comment that the focus needs to stay on the rink, in my opinion. And, you know, it was mentioned at a prior meeting that we should look to other recreational options. And that's fine, but we can look to other recreational options, but I think the focus should still remain on the rink. There's an authorization of $2.25 million for the borrowing of a purchasing of a rink. There's an enterprise fund that's been established of $516,000 to operate the rink. So I guess if we go beyond that scope, are we able to use those funds? So that's why I think we should maintain the committee as it's been structured and focus on the rink with an understanding that if it's possible to expand to some other type of recreational, things that can be done, then we would look at that. So that's my feeling.
Thank you.
Point of information, we referenced, this is the second meeting where it's been referenced, that there was $2.25 million voted and allocated to purchase a rink as well as an enterprise fund. And I just wanted clarification, was that to purchase any rink or was that to purchase Restuccia when that was the possibility of being available? Were those, has that vote already been solidified that this town can purchase a space for $2.25 million without any further vote of the town? Or was that specifically to purchase Restuccia?
Mr. Chair, it's my recall that the article did not specify Restuccia, that it, clearly there was an intent at the time based upon some discussions that had taken place, but it was generic in the sense that it didn't specify the Eleanor Restuccia rink.
It does answer my question. And I would say, you know, I'm not here to diminish the need for a rink, but, you know, we don't have a pool in town. Right now, our swimming team needs to go to the Reading Y, and we were able to find an alternative space. So my concern is, we have 400 people who came to vote to spend $2.25 million on an ice rink. But if we had similar votes for other needs in town, you know, I would think we could get similar interest. I don't want to limit it to just an ice rink if by doing so, you know, we're negating the possibility of adding, you know, a couple extra hundred square feet so that there's an indoor batting cage for the baseball to use in the winter. Or, you know, like Hockey Town has with the suspended floor for indoor floor hockey that could be used for footsall in the winter. I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities, and to limit it to an ice rink limits the usage of it. And, you know, at this point, to spend that amount of money for hockey, you know, even though it's needed and will be needed in a few years, there are other rinks that could be pursued. There might be a private entity that's talking about building a rink nearby that we could enter into. I don't want to limit, you know, the use of this to just a rink. So I would be asking to have it be called the Rink and Recreational Facility, again, to have it be in the interest of collaboration and not to have it be limited to just an ice rink. It might just be that we can afford an ice rink. It might just be that an ice rink is all that makes sense. But I would hate to have us be so narrowly focused on the ice rink that we miss the opportunity to expand the ability of more people in the town to use it. You know, it might be that it's an ice rink with, you know, one extra recreational space that can be used for multi-purposes. But we won't know that unless we're asking the committee to explore that.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we're not asking the committee to explore that. I think that that's what was mentioned before, and I think that, not to speak for Mr. McCoy, I think that we said that it's focused on the rink, but it can explore other recreational options.
Right.
I mean, let's not forget that we have schools that have gyms in it. We have a new, brand-new high school that has an indoor track in it. So there are options for kids to use indoor facilities now. There's not a lot of options for youth hockey and figure skating for them. So I think our focus is one thing, but we can look at the expansion of it. Heck, we don't even have a, we can look at simulating golf, but we have a golf team. Where do they go in the winter?
Right.
So, you know, so we can look at that stuff. But I think that there's been appropriations for a specific purpose, and I think that this committee should be established for that purpose with the understanding that it can look out, just as we did at Yentile Farm. As was mentioned at the last meeting, out of that came the dog park, out of that came the outdoor skating facility over near Rotary Park. So things can take place. I think the focus is the rink with an understanding that we would look at other options.
Mr. Eaton?
I tend to agree with Mr. Kyra. I think that the genesis behind this committee being formed was the special town meeting we had four and a half years ago to try and acquire Restuccia, and then the recent events of this winter where it became clear that the rink was otherwise acquired, not by us. I do think that the primary charge certainly should be towards an ice rink with the understanding that other alternatives could be explored for feasibility as well, but that the primary purpose being an ice rink. I'm not in the business, obviously, of developing and building ice rinks. I don't know what their, really what that business model is. I don't know if it would make sense to pair it with something else to just increase, I guess, the customer base, if it is. But my own preference is that we kind of stick with the theme of what the governing body of this town, a town meeting, special town meeting in late 2014, certainly expressed a desire to acquire an ice rink. And I think that that should be consistent within this committee's charge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand the focus was the rink, but I do remember, even though, Jeff, you said it did not say Eleanor Restuccia in the article, and I get that, obviously illegal technicality. And I know I can't give verbatim, but we sat in the many executive sessions instructing you, and I'll just give generalization, to try to cut a deal to buy it. I think everybody in that room thought we were going to buy that rink. I think everybody in that room thought it. It may have not said Eleanor, but that was our intent, that was my intent. I remember getting up, trying, and I said, verbatim. I remember, let's try to make, let's not make, take a wrong and make it a right for kids that needed the ice rink. And we all thought we were going to buy that rink. But I hear you. Maybe technically it didn't say it there, but we were all looking to buy that rink.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I guess my point was simply that, as I recall, because we, and I think it was by design for a number of reasons, but that the Restuccia rink was not included in the article so that there is some flexibility that we're not confined to the Restuccia rink. And I want to take a look, it's been a while since I looked at that article, but if my recollection is correct, and in fact, it was not specific to Restuccia, that would mean that the town could pursue other options as long as it was for the purpose of an ice rink. The town has authorized us to borrow up to $2.25 million for the purpose of an ice rink, whether it's the Restuccia rink or some other facility.
Yeah, I think I've heard from quite a few people in the last week about this specifically, this issue, and all of them have kind of indicated that they want specifically the focus to be on a rink. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't explore other options at a different time. But I think that certainly, I tend to agree with what's being said up here, that the charge of this group, the focus of this group ought to be on a rink for the kids. And that doesn't mean, like Mr. Kyra alluded to with the Yentile project, that other things may not, may come out of it, or another group is formed down the line that takes up the charge of perhaps an indoor athletic facility. So we're hearing a lot of good feedback up here. Does anybody want to offer any type of motion?
Can I just say something first before the motion? Unless we wait another meeting, I'm, Jeff, did you talk to town council? Did he give an opinion relative to the appropriation? Could we expand on the indoor facility? I mean, do we even order to ask town council his opinion?
So I did have a conversation, I think part of the question, one of the questions that was raised at the prior meeting was the extent, what this committee could address in its various forms. And essentially, town council said that it is not uncommon for a committee to be established and over the course of time, through, by design or otherwise, for their role to expand beyond the original scope. And that in and of itself is not a problem as long as the committee is following the open meeting law. So, you know, the original intent of this committee was to be an advisory committee for the purpose of putting forward some recommendations on addressing an ice rink. If the committee was to remain as currently constituted and there were no additional members added, and the committee decided to, in addition to the focus on an ice rink, to explore opportunities for other types of sports programs, there's no, nothing illegal about that as long as we conform, the committee conforms to the open meeting law.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, and that, the motion would be that the name would be Ice Rink and Recreational Facility, Maintaining the Original Committee as it was constructed.
So then, I'm sorry, Evan, the name would be the Ice Rink and Recreational Facility Committee?
Delete all, right? Right, and maintaining the original.
No additional members?
No additional members.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I would just ask, again, you know, that, I had said last time, I didn't think we needed to have this discussion further. I appreciate the name, including recreational facility, because I think it at least puts that in there as a possibility. I do expect there are some members on this that have, you know, their interests are beyond just hockey. So my hope is that the members that are on it, specifically the athletic department, the recreational department, and other specific members that I know have involvement in other organizations, will at least consider the possibility of space being included. I mean, if we're going to have a workout room for the kids to utilize, that workout room should be available to more than just the hockey kids, things like that. That's my expectation, is that this is going to be an ice rink primarily, but if we can make it with additional indoor recreational space that the entire town has access to and not just that one subset. So that's all, with the name change, it at least includes that in the scope, hopefully. The additional members, I think, are unnecessary at this point. If other people feel differently about it, then I'm assuming they're going to reach out and let us know they feel differently about it. But I don't want to hold up the committee actually meeting to start their conversations.
Yeah, I was surprised at how quickly, when the manager and I were discussing, setting the agenda, and he was preparing this memo, we started to list off all the youth groups, athletic groups in town, how quickly the list grew. And if we were to include, and rightfully so, include everybody in the conversation, that we would have a table of, you know, close to 30 to 40 people. And I don't know how much, who knows how complicated that could get.
Supper included in that, by any chance?
And I would.
Depends on what restaurant.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make one on the comments, since we have two members of the board on that committee, my hope would be that even though we're not expanding the committee membership, that you guys especially are going to be listening to the community and the different organizations that might be reaching out just to ask for, you know, that hoop to be put up in the empty room or whatever the case may be, so that we're serving as many members of the community as we can in this process.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
So just to be clear, at this point, the 12 individuals who are on this committee, we will begin to reach out and establish a mutual date to set up a first meeting. So the next board to consider is the pole relocation. As I noted earlier, I would recommend deferring on that subject to the board's pleasure.
Thank you, sounds good.
Next under board to consider is execution of the bond issuance for the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority. You'll recall at the town meeting, the town authorized, the town meeting members authorized the town to receive a grant, combination grant, a loan in the amount of $856,000. Seventy-five percent of that is funded via a grant, or $642,000. The remaining 200... The remaining $214,000 is a zero-interest loan for 10 years. It's actually broken up into two parts. The first portion of the grant loan would be addressed in fiscal '19, and the balance equal amount would be addressed in fiscal '2020. There are documents that the board will need to execute, and also take various votes to authorize this borrowing. So, if it's the pleasure of the chair, I can go through each one individually, and you can take votes in accordance to that.
If anybody doesn't have any objections, we can maybe take them up all at once.
All right, so the first, the town of Wilmington, in the county of Middlesex, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts promises to pay to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, or registered assigns the sum of $107,000 in installments on May 15th of each year, as set forth below, without interest. And the amounts represented are for fiscal '20, '21, '22, '23, '24, '25, '26, '27, '28, and '29, all in the equal amounts of $10,700.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
And there are several documents I can have, if you wish, after the meeting, the board just sign it in my office.
Sure.
Next under board to consider is a request to appoint Tina Conway, who is our town clerk, as a public records access officer. You may recall, under the public records law that was revised in January 1st of 2017, municipalities are required to appoint one or more records access officers. The former town clerk, Sharon George, had served in that role for most departments, with the exception of police and fire. And just by way of information, some of their responsibilities include coordinating the agency of municipalities' response to requests for access to public records, assist individuals seeking public records in identifying the records requested, assist the custodian of records in preserving public records and preparing guidelines that enable the requester to make informed requests.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? A second. Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Next under board to consider, establishing a town meeting review committee, or directing the inhabitant bylaw subcommittee to prepare a recommendation on the date time of the annual town meeting. You'll recall, there was some initial discussion about the establishment of a standalone town meeting review committee. As the discussions took place over the last several weeks, you know, there was some interest on, from members of the inhabitant bylaw committee to serve on both, and then certain members were not interested in serving on both committees. It's basically my recommendation that, since the inhabitant bylaw committee, part of their typical role would be to review the town meeting dates, which is part of the bylaws, that this responsibility be folded into the inhabitant bylaw study committee. Many of the members that are on the inhabitant bylaw study committee have expressed interest in addressing the town meeting date question. And I've provided to you, the members who are on the inhabitant bylaw committee, I think, just as a practical matter, it would reduce the number of meetings, since one committee could handle both the final review of other elements of the inhabitant bylaws, as well as the town meeting question.
Do we have a list of who is on this committee now?
Just reading my mind, Mr. Kyra, because I don't see the person that I recommended here. I recommended the, to the chair, to the manager, rather, that we have, or if you remember, recall, my comments where I wanted somebody to designate from the senior center. What better, what better person that has the pulse on the senior center than Terry Marciello, who's also a resident in town, and has obviously advocated, nobody advocates more for them, so I want to make some...
And there is my, in lies my question, because I know we had talked with Beverly Dalton, serving on that, since her participation in the town meeting. That's why we had a separate town meeting review committee that a moderator had suggested we set up with about 15 people. We had the inhabitant bylaw committee set up differently. Somehow or other, we asked people in the inhabitant bylaw if they wanted to serve on the other one. Now, does Terry Marciello want to serve on the inhabitant bylaw committee? She may not want to. So, that's where, does Beverly want to serve on that? She may not want to. So, are we forcing them to serve on something they don't want to serve on, but yet, we would like for them to be on that town meeting review committee? That's where I'm trying to...
Yeah, I guess, yeah, two things. So, first of all, I apologize, I did talk to the chair, and we talked about Terry Marciello being, serving in this role to review the town meeting, potential changes to that date. She is agreeable to that, as has Beverly Dalton been agreeable to serving in that role. And my thought was that, and I've had conversations with the town clerk, where the discussion over the inhabitant bylaw, the town meeting dates could be the first agenda on their docket, if you will. And Beverly and Terry would not necessarily need to be voting members, but could certainly participate in those discussions, offer their comments and background, and presumably, their recommendations would be heated and ultimately become part of the recommendations that come back to the board, without them having to serve as full voting members in, of the inhabitant bylaw committee. I mean, it's certainly an option if the board wants to have two separate committees. That certainly is possible. I think it just, it really is, I think it's going to be easier for folks to attend one meeting than potentially, some of these folks have expressed interest in being on both, and they're going to have two sets of meetings they're going to have to be attending.
Here's the thing that comes to mind, is the example of Mr. Stewart, who served, I believe, on it for a year or two, maybe even longer, but then decided not to. And so, you know, like I said, we can't force anybody to do anything they don't want to, but if they want to volunteer for a certain amount of time, and then after that, they want to reassess the situation, they certainly are welcome to do that. You know, we're grateful for any and all service, so.
Mr. Chairman, I understand, and it makes sense, but I would like to see who's on the town committee portion, and who's on the inhabitant bylaw, at least so we have an idea of how it's crossing over.
Pretty close to all of them, wasn't it?
Yeah, so, the, one individual I know who was not interested in serving on the town meeting committee was Dan Ardito. Valerie Gingrich, I don't believe, was interested in serving on the town meeting committee. The other individuals here that are listed, I think would be, it's my understanding, prepared to serve on both committees. I, you know, I'd have to go back, I guess, again, and look at the list, but the two people that come to mind specifically are Mr. Ardito and Valerie Gingrich, as not being interested in serving on the town meeting review committee.
So, I think Mr. Kyra has a pretty fair request. If you could just give us the list off in a memo, exactly who wants to do what, and we can move forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mr. Kyra coming up with the list, but I do like the idea what Jeff said. Maybe what we do is combine it together, and then maybe the first agenda would be talk about the town meeting, and those folks, Beverly, whoever, you know, get their input, and then we can get to the next level. And that way, they don't have to attend multiple meetings. So, I think that is a good idea, to do that.
So, at this point, it sounds like the direction of the board is to have two committees. Is that my understanding, or are we just looking to get an understanding of who had expressed an interest on both committees, and then the decision would be made at a subsequent meeting to have two or one committee?
Can I just ask a clarification, Mr. Hull, from your memo? You had referenced that certain people didn't want to be on two different committees, but they had no problem expanding the rest. Is it fair to say that Mr. McCoy, Mr. Romano, Mr. Oliveri, Mr. Ardito, Ms. Gingrich, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Desmond, and Chief Desmond, and...
Terry Marciello.
Well, she's, she's separate. Is Bob Richter still?
No.
Okay. So, those eight people, one, two, three, four, five, six, those eight people are willing to be on a joint committee? They don't want to be on two separate committees necessarily, but they're willing to be on a joint committee?
They're all interested in being on a joint committee. Of those people, I know Mr. Ardito and Ms. Gingrich are not interested in serving on a separate town meeting review committee. And I would have to check, Harak Shaw, I don't recall off the top of my head whether he was interested in serving on a separate standalone review committee. I'd have to go back and look at the two separate lists at this point.
Okay. And then, so then Beverly Dalton and Terry Marciello are the two that were kind of nominated for the town meeting committee?
Right.
But have not been on the inhabitant bylaw committee?
That's right.
Okay. Because, I mean, a really smart person once told me, don't kick a willing horse. So, if we have eight people willing to kind of address both issues on one committee, I don't want to make them double their efforts, or then have six of them double their efforts to have to come to two separate meetings, when eight people are willing to kind of address both in one meeting. But I don't want to eliminate, you know, Ms. Dalton and Ms. Marciello from the process, so.
No, I don't think it has to...
Through the chair, and I agree with you, and that's what I'm saying. One committee is fine, but I would like a list of the names. It seems very confusing to me. If we would just have a list of 10 or 12 names, and out of those 12 names, three of them are designated just for the town committee, you can just put beside it, just town meeting committee, town meeting. So, we know that there are 12 members, but three out of those 12 are just for the town meeting. That's all we're looking, oh, that's all I'm looking for. That's one committee, but designated that way.
Okay. I think that's, are we all in agreement on that, Mr. Request? I think that's a fair request. Thank you, Mr. Kyra. And you'll get back to us, so we will table this?
Yes.
Particular item, and full clarification the next time, if we can move forward with that group. So, our thanks to those who are willing to volunteer. Okay, moving on to our next board to consider, Nancy Valli.
Yes, the next board to consider deals with the half marathon run-walk. The original date that was scheduled was September 22nd, and she is seeking to change the date to Sunday, September 29th. I don't, to my, best of my knowledge, there's no conflict with that.
Is there a motion?
So, second?
It's made, seconded by Mr. Kyra. Any discussion?
Just briefly, I did reach out to the chamber, and they are anticipating, hopefully having online registration up by the end of this week, or thereabout. So, it's, you know, I've done the race several times, and I know Mr. Hull has too. It's a very family-friendly race, so if you have a stroller, feel free to do that. And also, for those that are ambitious, ambitious and want to try a half marathon, it's a very flat course, so it's a perfect beginner's course for a half marathon.
Thank you. I agree, it's a great event. I've all done it many times. It's certainly not as fast as Mr. Hull or Mr. Eaton, but it's always a good take, so we wish them good weather on that day. We have a motion in the second. All in favor? It's unanimous.
The next board to consider is the August meeting date. There was, as I understand it, a conflict with one or more members.
Conflict with me.
Yep. So, we had originally talked about the 12th, and now I think we're hoping for perhaps August 5th. Does anybody have a conflict with August 5th?
I am waiting on August 5th. I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. You just have to take us all with you.
It's with my in-laws. I don't know if you want to go. Sorry if anyone from home is watching at this point.
Okay, so, our alternative would be...
We're going to be hit the 19th.
We're going to be, without Mr. Kyra on the 12th, without Mr. McCoy on the 19th, without Mrs. Almohoney on the 5th.
The 26th is too late.
26th is awfully late. Is anybody open to an alternative, the week, day of the week?
Conference call.
Is there a Tuesday or a Wednesday that works for somebody on one of those weeks?
Probably, if anyone's going to see. I mean, leave it to the 12th. I'll just, you know, I'll be out, that's all. I mean, if everybody else has a conflict, unless you go to the 26th.
Any of them work for me. I'm happy to.
The 7th, the 7th is a good day. It's a Wednesday, though. Is that a problem?
Anybody have a conflict on the 7th?
See, I'll check my calendar like everybody else this time. I didn't do it last time.
Anything, 7th works for me as well. Anything on the town end? Is there a conflict, any?
Not that I know of at the moment, but Wednesday, the 7th, so I think that should be, Beverly, any thoughts on that? All right.
Okay, Wednesday, August 7th is the proposed date. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. I'll second it.
Second, in motion. Any more discussion? Seeing none?
Thank you.
You're welcome. I wish you all safe travels in the month of August. Apparently, I'll be the only one left behind. Mr. Eaton? Okay, apparently those of us with young children will be home. Okay, we are on to announcements. Any announcements from my colleagues?
Just two. First, congratulations to the Wilmington Water Department for the award that they received. Excuse me. And Memorial Day ceremony and parade was just outstanding. Once again, kudos to the Veterans Agent and the, or I should say Veterans Director, Lucem Aglia, Veterans Agent, Michael Frotten. And the parade, the participation, the residents that came out, the families, it was just outstanding. At the ceremony is very touching. And can't say enough of what Veterans Agent and the Veterans Director does for this community. Just outstanding. And lastly, I was going to challenge you to that road race, but I didn't know who would. I know Jonathan and Mike, I don't know if we should have a five-member race.
I think the residents would love this.
The Jordan person, we're not doing the marathon, right? The half marathon, right?
We could do a duct tape.
Oh, forget about that. I don't do that. But I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I was able to march in the parade because I've got a hip issue, but I was at the cemetery, and I was the welcoming committee for all you guys and the town manager, and I chaired you as you come in. So, I was at least there in the viewing stand. But it was a great time, as Mr. Kyra said. Delu does an outstanding job, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then announcements, Mr. Eaton?
I'd just echo my colleagues. It was just a wonderful event yesterday, and ceremony at the cemetery really is a very significant way to kind of remind everybody what Memorial Day is all about. I think this town does a great job with Memorial Day, and it was a privilege to be an extraordinarily small part of it, but I think we do a very good job for veterans in our community as well.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, it was, it was great to be a part of the parade, not as a soccer mom or a band mom, or, you know, watching them go by, but to be a part of it, I thank you guys for including me in it. It felt very surreal. I also wanted to just give a shout out real quick to all the track kids on Sunday. Tracks, one of those overlooked sports of Wilmington in the D3 states, where Sunday at Merrimack College, and it was awesome to be there and watch them. The kids, you know, from freshman to senior participating, and at the state level was really great to see, so good. senior participating, and at the state level was really great to see, so good job to them for getting there, and for those that made it forward to the All States next weekend.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and so I just have three quick announcements myself. I do apologize, I wasn't able to join you all at the memorial, I was out of state at a wedding this weekend, but I trust that it was a fine event. I've heard nothing but good things since I've been back, and I know that Lou and Mike always do a fantastic job. I appreciate Mr. Kyra standing in for me, and so certainly, it was a wonderful day for our community. Also, two other wonderful days coming up for our community. I want to congratulate everyone graduating from Wilmington High School this week, and also Shawshene Tech next week. To all the graduates, congratulations and best wishes. And it's difficult not to think about those who have come before us around this time, specifically next Thursday, June sixth. Speaking of young people, there was, seventy-five years ago, next Thursday, Wilmington resident Elmer Drew was seventeen years old, killed in action as he stormed the beaches of Normandy in defense of our country and our world the way we know it. And so we're thinking of him. His memorial is on the corner of Woburn Street and West Street, if you ever get the chance to see it. And so we're grateful for his service. Interesting to note that his mother was the first ever female member of the Board of Selectmen. So Wavy Drew was certainly, we're grateful for her volunteerism as long ago as it was, and how she's blazed the trail for other fine women who have become selectmen like yourself. So we're thinking of Elmer, and we're grateful for his service this time of year, as the graduates move on to the next stage of their life. And with that, we're on to new business. Is there any new business?
Just, just real quick, if I could. I was gonna bring up Cook App, but I like the idea of sending the letter to the EPA. I think that's gonna be a lot more meaningful. And Jeff, I just wanted to ask you, on Wildwood Street, the baseball field, relative to the girls varsity softball team, I know the home games they play at Town Park, and I know there's no dugouts. Is there anything in the pipeline of maybe putting a couple of dugouts for the baseball field that's on Wildwood Street, and maybe change the configuration of the diamond, and put a dimensional field, and put two dugouts? Because I, from what I'm hearing, I understand that the girls varsity softball team, that there's no dugouts at all at Town Park, and that's all their home games. And if we could, we have that nice, beautiful baseball field that's right across the cemetery on Wildwood Street, nice place. Is there any way we can try to make that to for varsity soft, the girls varsity softball team, home team, if that's anything in the pipeline?
Yeah, it's not something that is in the pipeline. I know there were some discussions, and there was, it's my understanding that they were practicing anyways, down at the Town Park, but I, no, I had not heard that there was a concern or a problem with the field at Wildwood.
All right, no, because I did, a couple folks did talk to me, and is there a possibility that we could look at the field on Wildwood, and maybe convert that to the girls varsity softball team home games, and the, you know, just change the diamond and put a dimensional fence in that area for varsity softball, and a couple of dugouts? If that's something that we could look at?
We can certainly look at it, and, you know, we'll have to cost it out and figure out what the...
Maybe get it for next year or something. Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate that, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other new business? Okay, we're on to important dates, Mr. Hull?
Important dates, May thirty-one through June first, Council for the Arts, thirty-ninth Annual Art Exhibition. Friday, six-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM, Saturday, one PM to four PM. June first is the Recreation Department's Fishing Derby, Town Beach, eight AM to eleven AM. June second, Wilmington High School graduation. June fifth, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. June sixth, Shawshene Tech graduation. June eighth, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. June eight, Townwide Yard Sale, eight AM to two PM. June eighth is the Town Beach opens for the summer. June ninth, Hardin Tavern Open House, four-thirty Salem Street, two AM, two PM to four PM. June ninth, Brady's Foundation 5K Run for Recovery, Town Common, nine AM. June tenth is a Board of Selectmen's meeting here, Room Nine, seven PM. June fourteenth is the Rotary Trivia Night, Nights at Columbus. June fourteenth and fifteenth is the Wilmington Relay for Life, Wilmington High School, Friday afternoon, June fourteenth to Saturday morning, June fifteenth. June sixteenth is the Farmer's Market, Town Common Parking Lot, ten AM to one PM. And June twenty-fourth is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, seven PM.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion's made?
Second.
Second, all in favor? It's unanimous. Good night, everyone.